So I
Okay, believe me, we're gonna have to start for you.
Uh, can please rise and clap.
Let's listen to the flag of the United States of America and to the revolving for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please remain standing, uh, moment of silence for what happened in movieville recently? What's happening all over the country and especially for our first responders and our deployed military? Thank you. Mr. Dixon, I hear up first for public comment.
Okay. We gotta hand out to the members. I'm Bob Dixon and I'm here tonight representing Northern Central Railroad. And this is Ashley Zimmerman, our development coordinator, manager over at Northern Central. We just, first of all, want to thank you for the funds that you returned to us last year. We charge a five percent amusement tax on every ticket that is sold and we send those checks to you monthly. And last year you gave us back a third of that money. I want to share with you a little bit how we used what you gave back to us. We tried to do things that benefited the citizens of the New Freedom Borough and the New Freedom area. Some of those things were at Freedom Fest, we ran trains and hold about four hundred people that day. Five dollars for kids, ten dollars for adults. That's less than half of the price that we normally charge. And it was only with your subsidy. We had a banner across the front of the train station that said these rides were supported by New Freedom Borough. So if you were down at Freedom Fest, hopefully you saw that. I'm trying to give you recognition. We ran Ice Cream Express where people got a train ride and an ice cream. We ran it three times during July and August. And again, at reduced prices for ten dollars for a child and a fifteen dollars for, you know. We had the Borough mentioned as a sponsor in our Cowboy Weekend activities. That was held right down there in Marge Goodfellows Park in the parking lot and over in Summit Grove. And one of the most recent things we've done is we supported and all the riders for the Chili Dog Run. It went up to and took them up to five K and then they got to run back. So those are some of the things. What do we have planned at 2023? Again, we want to support Freedom Fest. Uh, smoking, Smoke on the Rails, your barbecue event. We will be bringing passengers down and dropping them off here at Marge Goodfellows Park and encouraging them to go participate in the event. And that'll be a seventeen dollar train steam engine ride, which is less than half of what our home. We're looking to do four ice cream runs during the summer. And then Cowboy Weekend, we have an end of summer special. This is your anniversary, it's also our anniversary. June marks the tenth year that Steam into History on the Northern Central Railroad will be in operation. And we're planning a tenth anniversary celebration in mid-June. That will definitely bring a lot of people to town. So last year we brought over sixteen thousand passengers to town. Those people not only bought train tickets, they also ate at your restaurants, bought gas at the service stations and spent money elsewhere. So we think we're helping to bring people in and help support the whole community. What we're asking for is if the council would approve giving us a rebate again. We paid twenty-two thousand, or excuse me, twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars in amusement tax this last year. I would like to get half of that back and we will use it and advertise the Borough as help sponsoring some of these discount activities. The Railroad is a very expensive operation to run. I'd love to bring the ticket prices down, but unless I can get more people riding, it's hard to do. So, in the packets, we have our, uh, 2022 annual report. You also have some of the detailed activities that we're gonna be doing this coming year. And, um, some of the other, um, activities and the rack cards telling people how to find us and how to, uh, schedule train trips. I'll close. What's Ashley, do you have any?
You covered everything, Bob.
So if you've got any questions, we'll try to answer those.
Anything from council? Um, I have a question or a statement or something or another, I guess. Uh, I wanted to bring this up. It can be added to next month's agenda 'cause it's, even though Northern Central Railway is on the agenda, uh, this particular item wasn't on the agenda. Uh, Andy's gone out and he's done a search on eight other municipalities. Nobody else has an amusement tax. The amusement tax was enacted, I think, because of some rough spots that the NCR had back before it was NCR.
That was a totally different operation. That was a for-profit company.
Right.
We were nonprofit formed by Reed Anderson and William Sensen.
Yes.
So we have no, had no relationship to that previous user of the tracks.
And the fact of the matter is, the Lions Club is exempt from the amusement tax because they are nonprofit and
We're 501(c)(3).
And this organization is also 501(c)(3). Um, I would like to make a motion, which again, we could carry into next month. But I make the motion that we abolish the amusement tax and let these people operate. We are partnering with them on multiple things. They are a huge benefit to New Freedom Borough and to local businesses and to the rail trail experience and to the Trail Town York Economic Alliance. That would be the motion I would make.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
I would like to, I think that's, I agree with everything. I'd like just some time to research it.
Sure.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda. That's why I suggested it. But we still have the motion in the second. You wanna wait until, and we'll wait until next month to discuss it.
Okay.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Very much. Thanks for your time.
Hold on a second. You have a request for rebate of previous human taxes. I think your order, your suggestion would be going forward.
Right, going forward.
So if you're willing to give them an answer tonight, maybe you want the request this evening and then we could discuss the abolishment of next month, of
Next year.
Of 2023 tax.
To be up to date, I believe we've already paid the amusement tax for our runs in January and February. I think our March tax is in process. You'll be receiving that.
But if council's so votes, that could be refunded.
So then I guess I would entertain a motion to, for their request tonight, which is fifty percent of the 2022 tax return.
I'll second.
Don't you have to withdraw your first motion?
I'm sorry?
I'll withdraw my first second.
Yeah, it's table till next, until it's on the agenda for next month. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on a rebate in a second?
We got something out of
I withdrew my second for the first motion, so, 'cause it was on the table still.
Yeah, I second the next one.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on remating the fifty percent of the 2022 amusement tax paid by NCR? A discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Puts, my vote is aye.
Thank you.
Tasteful Occasions is not here.
We do have rec for public comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, folks. I think most of you know me. I'm Richard Garvey. I'm on the New Freedom Recreation Council. Um, last week's meeting, a couple items came up and we were asked to address council this week. This is Mike Williams. He's a New Freedom Borough resident and one of our avid pickleballers. The first thing I want to address is we have noticed that something has gone horribly wrong with the surface of the tennis courts at Marge Goodfellows Park. I don't know what caused it, but there are multiple hairline cracks all over the surface of the court. I went down there the other day. I ran my hand across the court. And obviously, we're gonna have some issues with the response of the ball when it hits the court. I don't know if there was any warranty with who put those courts in or what it's gonna take to fix them, but they're, they're a mess.
So it's more than a hairline crack, it's actually separated?
There
They're starting to get pits?
Yeah, it's all, it's the entire surface of the courts. It's, it's all over. But I noticed they're starting to get some cupping and some waving into the courts. So that's gonna create a problem. So just want to make you aware of it. Um, the, the second reason we're here tonight is we would like for your ideas and your help to find a solution to the cleaning of the floors in the community center. This has become a big issue for us. A lot of times when we go up there to play, uh, we have to dry mop or wet mop the floors because of what's on top of them. It becomes a safety issue for us. We've had a number of slips and falls based on things that are on the floor. And I, I, I don't know what the solution is. We're just asking.
Is this from the construction that was happening there or is it an ongoing issue?
It's an ongoing issue. Construction was, was an issue, but we addressed it. We came up, a group of us came up and wet mopped one night to get off there. We can't have dust on the floor. Another big problem for us is when they have events and soda spilled on the floor. There's no equipment up there for them to clean. And I addressed this with Mr. Schaefer. Uh, they can't wet mop 'cause the wet mops aren't out there. We have wet mopped up there. Another issue, and I talked to Mr. Schaefer about this too, is when the groups come in, we had a thirtieth birthday party was in there. And if there was one, there was a thousand miniature thirties all over the floor. And we had to get the, we couldn't mop them up, we had to vacuum them up. Um, I, again, I don't know what the solution is. We're just wanting to make council aware that there is a ongoing problem up there.
I think if, if the, the user of the space is responsible for cleaning after themselves, we either one, give them the equipment to clean the space or, and/or, uh, increase or have a clean fee. So that after the event, soda can be mopped up so that, you know, whatever needs to happen to get the floor clean. And it's not just pickleball that's affected. Anybody that's in there, I mean, you step in, you know, step in a soda spot, your shoes are sticky for a while.
I worry about the senior walkers in the morning. We got people that go around there walkers. You know, if they, if they hit a soda spot, they're gonna, they're gonna go down. I just, it's just, it's just a concern. Volleyball uses it, field hockey uses it. You know, we've got other athletic events in there besides pickleball. It's just that we could come up with an idea for it. We'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and the confetti thing was addressed in the recent contract change and that occurred months ago.
Okay, good, thank you.
And we talked about that. Um, and as far as the cleaning, you know, we talked about we're working on getting an area when the other storage area can be constructed that renters of the facility have an access point to have the tools that they need, tools and mops and cleaning supplies in order to clean up. Right now, they have no availability to any access to any point. So it's transitional period here is a little rough. We're trying to monitor and appreciate that they're willing to clean some things up and
Well, we use it. I'm not, yeah, we're not opposed to cleaning a little bit.
We're close, we're just not there yet.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much for your time.
What do we have to do about the tennis court? Warranty or, I don't know if there is one?
No, I mean, that, we're, well, we surpassed the warranty. We had previous discussions.
And bothered up last year?
Right, yeah. We said at that point, you're already past that, but those, the useful life of that surface that's on there is three to five years.
How long's it been in there?
Three years, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And the tennis, or the basketball court, I think also is
Oh, is that some horrible shit?
And there must be twenty-five kids down there playing basketball right now. And I'd much rather have them there than someplace else in town, to be honest with you.
Money well spent.
Can we make a motion to go out for quotes for the basketball in the tennis court?
You got test stars? Uh, I will, I can definitely check. Um, I mean, the basketball court's one thing, but that type of surface that's on the tennis court, it's a specialty, uh, surface that needs to be installed in a certain way. That could be co-stars eligible with its own contract. I can check, but I don't think we need much. Yeah, let me do the research and figure out what it costs.
Can a, can a recommendation be that until this area is built to house equipment for people to clean that have rented the community center, can Public Works check it each evening before they go? And if it needs fixed, they fix it for the next morning when the sports come in and the walkers come in?
The old, the best thing there would be to check it early in the morning before it comes in.
Okay.
So I'd check it in the evening, check it early in the morning.
I didn't know if they'd be here that
I think the bulk of any problems gonna be on the weekend when we've got big goes and, you know, major events that are occurring on the weekends and, you know, if soda and people are selling food and drinks and, you know, they have, who's gonna check it Sunday night? Nobody, you know? It would have to be checked Monday morning and that's gonna be you guys because you're using it first thing Monday morning.
What time do you come in?
Nine o'clock.
Nine AM, so they can, Public Works can check it before nine AM daily? And take care of it? Okay.
Especially after the weekend. That's when it seems to be the bulk of
And then once, uh, there is availability of cleaning items, then it will be the responsibility of the renter to clean that floor or they do not get their security deposit back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we should put that equipment out there without the facility built yet?
There, there would be no sync. There would be, we're talking about putting border hookups and everything.
Can you please call the office if you come in and, you know, or whatever, I know you come in like, don't, who, others come in later, don't they? Or like spread the word with others that come in, like let the office know if it's not.
Exactly, yeah. We need to know the day of.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys usually come in before nine o'clock.
Well, I mean, I'm in there usually, Mike usually's in there early too. So, yeah, we'll let the office know, I'll call.
Yeah, so that, you know, you keep after these people that are renting it to follow through and, you know, in the best they should.
Yeah, when Public Works goes down, they're cleaning the morning. If they see something, they'll know and they can
Report it in too.
You know, to the, to the office. So we know who would be responsible for that.
Yeah.
When you clean, wet mop, where are you filling your muckets from?
We have, we, Mike went out and bought spray bottles. And we spray and mop.
Oh.
I'll try to be better than that so you don't have to do that.
We appreciate it.
Maybe we can get one of the, I know they make the big wet mops too, that maybe we could
I think they'll have what they, they'll have what they need shortly.
Yeah, instead of, instead of just one of those straight mops that take three hours to do that whole gym.
Well, good. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Al. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, same.
Anything else for public?
Just a question, real quick. You have public comment at the beginning of your agenda and at the end of your agenda. Does it matter which one?
Well, normally, public comment at the beginning is for items on the agenda.
Okay. I didn't know which, if one was just
You can, you can feel free to go ahead. We don't really stick to that. We never have in the past. So if you would like to speak now, you can, don't worry.
All right, now that I'm already up here. Thank you so much. Um, so my name is Sarah Connelly. Um, on the HOA board at Freedom Crossing, um, which is Bee Tree Circle, Hunt Run, Leader Road, um, that area there. Um, I, it's been brought to my attention by some of the parents there as well as myself included that the speeding in that area is kinda crazy. I've spoken with, um, the Southern Regional and we're on some sort of list for the speedometer contraption and everything about there. I'm wondering what other efforts we can do moving forward? Like if we can, I know at one point in the, um, neighborhood behind, um, Goodwill and what have you, they had, um, temporary speed bumps there and which are now permanent speed bumps. Does a study need to be done? What a cost would be to do, you know, something just to keep the children safe?
Is it, is it particular time of day, i.e. morning or evening, afternoon?
So it's really, it's really not. Um, at this point in time, what's happening is Waze and other GPS, uh, apps are using that circle as a cut through. So people are using that like to drive through super fast to get to whatever delivery driver from what have you. I think we have at least one other resident here, so that's not just me. I'm here on behalf of
Yeah, I, I can answer, um, I can answer anything. Uh, I, I work from home. I live on Leader Road. It is, like she said, it's a cut through through the farmland, um, to get to eighty-three. And it's not in a certain hour. It is in the mornings when people go to work. It's also afternoon with delivery drivers and then people coming home from work at five o'clock.
So the, do you feel that the, the primary or the, the folks that speeding is on Leader Road and not inside the development itself or is it also inside?
I'm saying it in the development. And I, my children are older. I'm not concerned about them. There are a lot of kids that are five years old and younger and I'm scared to death that, you know.
I have a two and a three-year-old.
Is this maybe Bee Tree that you're talking about?
It's Bee Tree and Leader.
Okay, Leader and Bee Tree. When are we finished with the Constitution, North Constitution signs?
They can be moved and then more, more believe
I mean, you've gotten enough information, you think, there? How long were they there?
Um, truly? They've been there a little over a month now.
So why don't we, do you have any place else that you wanted to put them after North Constitution?
No, I, I think at this point it would be open. Um, if you talk to Southern Regional, they would use the, the radar speed trailer. They have the radar speed signs, so a little bit more portable and flexible out of location.
You don't have telephone poles out there. Where would us, we would just attach them?
We'd have to put signposts.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Um, so we can do those and basically collect the data and it would provide a little bit of feedback to the driver.
Honestly, I don't pay attention to that. I'm a speed demon myself. So I, like, I know that there's no repercussion from that.
That's the problem with Pennsylvania law, right?
Well, we can guess, but Speed limit's thirty-five through there, right?
I don't, I
Twenty-five in the neighborhood, but yeah.
Is it twenty-five?
I don't think there's a sign within the neighborhood that I'm aware of and I don't think there's one that's right there that says anybody's sign. I mean, even my son, he's in middle school. I moved his bus stop from Leader Road to Schaefer because I knew that it would be safer for him. Just, you know, he's old enough, he knows, but people are going so fast. I don't wanna risk it.
The, the benefit of having those signs out is even if, um, like you said, just ignore them, it still gives us the data to say that yes, there absolutely is a problem with speeding or the number of vehicles at this time. And then you can look at other traffic calming measures along the route. So we always have to have that raw data first before implementing some kind of traffic calming measure.
And it gives me an opportunity to go back to chief and say, look, we're having a problem. It's from seven to eight-thirty in the morning, from three-thirty to five in the evening. Can you please see if you could have an officer out there stationed a couple of times a week? Because that generally gets people's attention along with the, uh, flashing strobe light and speed limit.
Yeah, it was there a couple of years ago. Um, so how long do you think it would take to collect this data and to move? For us to come up with an idea of moving forward?
Normally, I would say you'd like to let the radar speed signs out there about a month to collect the data. Nice thing is, you know, the, the school year can affect that, so we're still within that timeframe to collect that data before school gets out. Because it will change.
Right, okay. And then, so do we just come back and revisit this or?
Well, in the meantime, before, while they're getting the signs, I'll make a point to speak to chief to see if we can get, um, some of our officers to
We had one out there this morning.
Through at the, at those times of the day. You think it's early morning, like seven to eight-thirty?
Right, it's, a lot of it on Leader Road is in the morning and the afternoon, like the normal commuting hours. Because people are using that to get to eighty-three. Within the circle, it's all the time because drivers, delivery drivers are using that as a cut through, um, on Bee Tree.
When you say delivery drivers, you're not talking about tractor trailers. You're just talking about Amazon and UPS.
And then also bus trucks, but also like DoorDash, like Uber Eats, all that, they're flying through.
Okay.
Did, did you say that there's not very, there, the signs, there's not very, or any speed limit signs out through those areas?
I don't believe that there's one in Bee Tree Circle. I, if there is one somewhere on Leader
There's one at the top of the hill over Leader Road and at the bottom of the hill over Leader Road, there's no emergency routes.
Yeah, that, Andrew, do you think there'd be possible that we could get a, maybe we have a look and see how many signs or if there's anything posted out through there, because that way nobody can say, well, I didn't know that, because you know how
Yeah, residential community is twenty-five miles an hour by, by state law. However, yeah, we would, we can still look at possible location and that would be posted with the radar speed sign as well.
We could look at some watch children signs, at least, or some yellow signs up sometimes that attracts people's attention too.
When, when you, when you roll up Hunt Run, I live up in that area, there's actually a thirty mile an hour speed limit sign. And thirty is a little bit fast, I think, for, uh, for community, for, uh, streets like that.
Or we could check the speed limit signs when we put the radars up.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
More, thank you.
I have another question. Um, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what about, um, I, I've seen in some states they'll have the, the yellow dome-like objects at speed limit signs. So when you're driving by, it, it gets your attention, grabs you a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's what you were referring to with the speed bumps that they had in Shrewsbury, uh,
Yeah, or even, um, I know you can't really get like a regular speed bump, right? Because you gotta go five miles an hour, but they've got the ones that ease and
They're called humps, speed humps.
Now those, in California, where I'm from, those are on residential streets. And you paint, you know, the yellow splash marks on them and people slow down, even though it's not a, a huge impact. But it forces you to slow down.
Shrewsbury did that. They tried the big major humps first that they have. And that's, uh, that may be something that we could take a look at after. But I know Shrewsbury has volunteered when they're not But I know Shrewsbury has volunteered when they're not using theirs. If we want to use them, they've offered that to us.
They have to be installed based on PennDOT's traffic calming manual in order to maintain your liquid fuels eligibility for that stretch of road. So there's a set of standards. It's not impossible. And it has been used in other municipalities in New York County where, but you have to follow their guidelines on location, on height and length. So, and, and notification for drivers going into that community. So it's, it's.
Who's over, who's overage?
I like his idea, though. Even if we just add the speed limit signs, painted the road.
Because you need to grab them, because a sign, you're not going to pay attention to. But something I physically got to prepare for, even if it's just the bumps, you're going to say, oh, okay, I got to slow down.
Brian, Brian's qualified to do all that. He's got the credentials and everything to be able to do.
Traffic studies.
Traffic studies, yeah.
Which is the same thing that the radar speed sign.
Speed calming and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We'll look at that too.
I'll, I'll take a drive out there tomorrow to report back to you, Andrew.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? It's hard to do.
I know.
I just wanted to admire us, of course. But I just wanted to thank the borough for all their support continuously and helping us do different things. We are well on the way with rebuilding our house and we're happy about that. But we had another idea that we came up with where we wanted to support Rose because Rose supported us and they, you know, helped us save our house. So we came up with it and it just happened to be on Earth Day this year where we're going to have New Freedom's first kite day. We're hoping for some wind, but the twenty-second, we're going to do kite day over here in the park at Marge. And it just happens to be the same day that Rose is doing their chicken barbecue and flea market and that kind of thing. So it kind of ties in together. And they're excited to be partnering with us. And gracious that we're doing this because the funding and everything is supposed to go back to them on behalf of the allies. So, you know, during the Saturday, they'll start probably about ten o'clock. And we're going to fly kites and of course, Rose will be doing her thing. So if you're hungry, you can just go up and get food and that kind of thing.
When is that? When is that, ma'am?
April twenty-second, Earth Day.
Ten a.m.?
Ten a.m.
And you'll be, you'll be at Marge Goodfellow Park, correct? But they'll be up at the firehouse.
They will be, but Chris has agreed to bring down the piece, the newest piece of equipment. He wants to bring that down, the showcase down with us, along with the pieces. I may be able to get another piece down with you to kind of let everybody see the apparatus and, you know, touch and feel and that kind of thing. So we're kind of excited about that.
That's very cool.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, just pray for wind for us. Get a little bit of wind anyway.
Get a little better wind.
Get those kites out off the ground. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm.
I'm Michael Werdin, W-E-R-D-I-N.
Sir, we need yours, actually. Your name and address to.
My name is Darryl Toquinto, T-O-Q-U-I-N-T-O. And I live on Sixteen Leader Road. And sir, if you're out there tomorrow, you can, you can put the signs right on my front lawn if you want.
Well, I don't think we'll be getting the signs out tomorrow, but I'm going to go out and take a look at where speed limit signs are and.
Thank you.
Sixteen Leaders Lawn.
Okay. Surely I don't want to do this myself, but Tasteful Occasions was supposed to be here. They met with me when Andy was out. They called because they got the letter regarding our vote at the last meeting that they were going to pay, not full price, but the, I think the seven-ninety price for January and February. I spoke with the solicitor and what we actually did was we extended their lease. So we need to go back and revisit this. Because when we extended their lease, we extended all of the terms of their lease, which means that they would be paying the, not quite the four-hundred-dollar rate for those two months. So I need to bring it up again.
Did they also do their due diligence when it came to why they'd get a discount?
They, they continued to do things.
Locking up, opening up, showing up.
Again, we all know, you know, we all have a problem with the way, the way it was done. But, you know, yes, they felt that they were still doing that through February and February was a transition month. So my part, my problem is from a legal standpoint, and again, speaking with Andy, that we pretty much probably are going to have to go with four hundred for January and February. March first started the nineteen-hundred a month. That would be, I think legally, what we would have to do. But I open it up for discussion.
Yeah, the, the issue I see is, is a lease is a contract. And you can't unilaterally change the contract, so both sides would have to agree. And two, if you go retroactively, if you say, I'm going to extend your lease for two months and then say, oh, by the way, two months later, it was actually this amount, not that amount, we'd have a tough time from a legal perspective. So that's really what I was relying on, is, is that, you know, we don't have an agreement from Tasteful Occasions. We didn't have an agreement from Tasteful Occasions out of January one. But again, I'll talk to you guys.
They were originally given it in September. They should have signed it by December and set on it for five months.
I understand what they should have done, what they didn't. So technically, there's no contract until they do sign.
When did we officially vote? I didn't think we voted on it until late November, did we?
September was first time. And during, from now to then, there have been numerous incidences of misuse of the community center and not following what they were supposed to be doing, as they brought to this council. Along with their unauthorized use of the auditorium.
The problem is, is those are all individual instances and they don't really bear on the contract itself. And we could have.
Well, we have remedies in the contract if they don't follow through. So there, we could terminate, we could do different things on the lease. I mean, that, all I'm saying is, is we have to have a contract that we're going by and we have to live by the terms of the contract, so.
Well, they weren't following the lease of the contract during that time.
Okay, but does it say we can increase your rent in the lease to twice or three times what it was?
But this, it was six-ninety plus the hundred dollars.
But they didn't sign that lease, correct?
That was their lease that they signed in twenty.
Right, so they should, and I don't know, I don't know what the signed deal was. I don't understand that.
It was, what's, six-ninety less, how much a month, four hundred?
No, it was seven-ninety, seven less four hundred dollars for doing service type things, like cleaning, showing, you know.
And a three-ninety net.
Yeah. The actual point of the whole thing is, there's nothing in writing. You know, I mean legally, we have to go with the seven-ninety minus the four-hundred dollar credit. Whether or not they were doing the four-hundred dollar credit worth of work.
We, if, if the document says seven-ninety and there's no, and they were supposed to do certain things, they didn't. We can certainly sue them for the difference. But you're going to have to prove that they didn't do the things they were supposed to do for the four hundred dollars.
For all intents and purposes, if we approve this for January, February, March first is the new one. Moving forward, we can be done with this, correct?
That would be my take.
Have they paid their April rent on April first when it was due of nineteen-hundred?
Not that I can find record of today.
So today is the tenth.
What about March? March was being one time.
So today is the tenth and they are now in default.
We're, we're talking about two different things. Is that fair?
Well, I would say that, you could say they're two different things, but it's continued not following their contract on what we're currently talking about.
Then we should, we should enforce under whatever the terms of the signed lease are starting year for one, if that's what you'd like to do. There's a ten, there's a five percent late charge if they're not paying on it before the tenth of the month, right?
And then a default by the tenth. Right?
That may be the case, yes.
Andrew says, yeah, the contract here too. If payment is not received honored before the tenth of the day of the month, lease fees shall be deemed in default of this lease agreement that they signed February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
Section four.
What have you worked out with them, with anything about building the room for a restored? That's, that's what we're, I'm sorry? Always creating that space. Yeah, see, I realize that, but they're going to, I'm, I mean, they're going to come back and say that we haven't, that was supposed to have been done by March thirty-first. So we're kind of both and.
They didn't lose anything.
They haven't lost anything. I agree.
They're still using the other closet.
Are they still using the five other spaces that they, that aren't in their lease?
They're still utilizing the same, same use amount of storage. Because that space hasn't been created. You can't take it away from them if something hasn't been created.
So can we rescind last, we can't rescind last month's motion. How do we, you know?
You're allowed, you're allowed to either revisit it or make a new motion.
You make a new motion.
So I would make a new motion. At least, let's at least, let's put aside the January, February issue and then we can address the other issue. Because they're really two separate.
Right.
I mean, the borough just needs to decide what they want to do with this lease. And that, that really, if, if you don't want them in there, if you want to pursue them, you can certainly do that. Lease is clear. So if they haven't paid by the tenth, you, you know, if they're employing spaces that, I don't know. If we can't give them other space that they should have given them, we're probably in default of lease also.
That's the point.
And everybody has signed the new lease, correct?
Correct, yes.
People are signing it seniors and everything.
We address this one at a time?
Yeah.
January, February, but can we, can we get that out of the way and then focus on, on the next item?
Yeah.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the original agreement of, what did you say, four hundred?
Three-ninety.
Three, three-ninety for January and February.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How's?
No.
I go as aye. Okay, so that works. Now.
Where did we discuss today?
Today.
Today is the tenth. So tonight, you need to follow up this week and figure out.
Before, I, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, to make sure that I'm not missing the payment anywhere that.
Right.
It's not overlooked anywhere else before taking any action at this point.
Okay. I think the, the one thing that we do need to do, though, is figure out when we're going to get the storage built to get them out of the areas that they're in currently. So we could open it up for cleaning, for, you know, have cleaning supplies for the front.
What we're waiting on now is the door.
Okay.
All right, so I, I generally recommend that when you're pursuing a contract claim, you go to court with clean hands, which means you're not in default of the contract as well. So that's, that's what I'm basing that recommendation on, is you may want to wait until we're in full compliance with the lease terms.
I don't think we can do anything tonight. I think we have to wait until next meeting.
If Andy, if Andy's not comfortable, he hasn't received the payment, I'm not sure that we're.
I looked everywhere. I, I would know who'd be posted, but I'm not a hundred percent confident without checking with Tara first.
I mean, the other thing you can do is you could have Andy give them a written notice that says, hey, these are the ways you're in default of the lease as of the, you know, first month of this lease.
I think something like that needs to be done because of the repeated, you know, the things that we've been through over the last four months of them rewriting the lease and giving it back to us, you know, and telling us, you know, certain things on the way it's going to be. I think it just needs to be stated to this tenant that there is a contract. It is due on the first. We expect you to follow the contract.
We signed it.
It's nineteen a month. Currently, if, if they haven't paid on, on the first, they're, at the minimum, there is a five percent penalty for the month of April. Correct?
And they paid the right amount in March, right?
That's correct.
Nineteen hundred.
And I think, yeah, Andy has said he doesn't know if there's a check sitting somewhere or whatever. So I, I think we need to let you do your thing and, and come back to us and report on it next month.
Not that, not that matters, I want to test Andrew's memory, but when they paid, when they paid March, did they pay at the beginning of March or did they go right to the?
No, they, they paid at the end of the month before.
Oh, so.
In February.
Yeah. They used to pay a year in advance, didn't they?
Like six months, yeah.
Six months, yeah. And we're sure they didn't do that?
No, they did not.
Okay.
But if you check with Tara, nothing has come in. Tomorrow, a letter will go out to them for documentation?
Absolutely. I'm not going to put it in the file as we discuss.
We don't have to make a motion on that. That's just business.
Just business, it's business that, that, how it should be done. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question with the solicitor? Like, you're saying that we're not in compliance also, so.
I think it's worthwhile setting a tone based on the relationship at this point. I don't think we go to court until we're, they haven't lost us.
Right. As a matter of fact, they probably have more than they would if.
They do.
Currently, if they had their new closet built, correct? Yeah, so they're trying to make it.
Let's just wait and see if there's a check here or any of them. That's a normal kind of thing to do, so. We'll get a report back next month and see where we're at. Anything else? Okay. Approve of, I'm sorry, approval of minutes of meeting held March thirteenth. Is obtained a motion?
Make a motion. It'll be approved March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, meeting minutes.
I'll second.
First and second of the session, corrections?
I requested that my entire statement be included with no objection last month. And it stays omitted from these minutes. I request, I was asked to send them by Andrew to send them to him. I did send them. I request that they be included in these minutes, as I asked last month.
I said.
It, it's up to the borough council whether they want to include it or not to, now, it's not a point of personal privilege. That's not really, point of personal privilege under Robert Trolls is, I'm too cold, can you close the window? I can't hear because there's an air conditioner running. It's gen, it's not used to make a statement.
Well, certain people's personal privileges get detailed in here, but I see very clearly that.
All I'm telling you is Robert Trolls doesn't have a point of personal privilege that relates to standing a statement.
There was no personal privilege. The only thing that was included was the motion.
You addressed a personal privilege and you went through all of these various topics and that's all in these minutes.
Now, only the listing of the topics of the minute. Your topic is in, is in the, is in the minutes as well. Your topic says, council member read a statement during point of personal privilege addressing the meeting on February thirteenth in her opposition to her imposed censure.
Then why doesn't yours say that you just read a statement? Yours lists in detail what your statement was. Mine does not. And I'm asked clearly for mine to be included.
The first part of that was not, there was a personal privilege, the second part was. And that's why it's just summarized there in that last sentence.
I see very clearly favor here and it's wrong.
I can go through and address the comments that you made. I would rather move on to try to have some semblance of peace and order. If you like, I can address what you said at the last meeting.
I don't want you to address it. I want my statement put in these minutes.
That would mean that anytime anyone wanted to make a statement and spend ten minutes talking, that we would include it in the minutes. For Robert's rules, minutes are for motions and actions, not for discussion, not for personal remarks, not to put something on the record. That's what they're supposed to be for.
This council did something that had never been done before, and they set a precedent for that. And I'm requesting that my statement be included in these minutes.
Your statement was opinion. Opinions are not...
Your opinion is given every time that you give your statement at the beginning of a meeting, okay? I gave my statement, and I'm asking for my statement to be put in these minutes.
So it's really up to Borough Council whether or not they would like to include Councilwoman Raritz's statement in full in the borough minutes. There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as written, and there is a second. So you would have to ask whoever made the motion to amend their motion to include your statement in full, and whoever would second if they were willing to do that, and then we get out of the vote. Otherwise, we have a motion and a second.
I ask you to amend your motion, Ryan, to include my statement in the minutes.
I will know.
Then at the very least, attach my statement to the end of these minutes on the website.
That's the same thing as including your statement in the...
Well, your thing got right, put right in the minutes from February. I'm saying attach it to the end like he does the manager's report.
The only thing that was included in the minutes from February was the actual censure itself. Does that make it wrong with that?
Yeah, the whole thing.
Right. That was the motion. It was a motion to censure, and that, that, the motion was put into the minutes because that's what you do with a motion. But this isn't, this, what you, what you read was not a motion. I'm gonna move on. Are there any other corrections? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Has?
No.
My vote is aye. Treasurer's report? Do you have questions to leave your seminar?
There were a couple of questions on the March 2023 treasurer's report. The first was a question about the LCD alcohol license on page three. That is painted from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the issuance of a liquor license or renewal of the liquor license within the borough limits. So that's, I believe that's a $250 fee that's paid to the municipality annually that is the host municipality of a liquor license. So everyone that has one, please tap the fee to the LCD, and then it comes to the municipality. Also on page three and four, there was revenue noted for barbecue revenue. That's team and vendor registrations for the Smoke on the Rail event at the end of July. Page seven, Tru's Berry Sewer Use Fee, the $31,830.53. This was for capital purchases. This includes a carryover from 2022 that relates to capital purchases that was not used. So we're transferring that into 23 as, as it's done every year, and the $31,000 that was paid is just the balance. And that'll be reconciled at the end of every year with that proportionate share report that council saw last month. Also on page seven, Grease Trap, that is the full amount of the fine that was received from the Tru's Berry Borough Authority. Any fines that are generated within that collection system come to fund, I think, fund the sewer fund at the treatment plan. Page 12, there was $645.69 for a re tear. That was marked a screen sweeper. That was actually the leak machine, and that was a discharge tube for the leak machine. So we just updated the memo line on that.
Can I stop you on page 12 real quick?
Sure.
There's two from Matthew's Garage for the exact same memo. Is that an error or was that?
That was just two different inspections.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, sorry, let's just clarify on that. Also on page 12, there was a $750 charge for Smoke on the Rail. That is sanctioning fees for both sanctioning bodies, Kansas City Barbecue Society and State Cook-Off Association. And obviously, that gets paid through team registrations as we talked about earlier. Page 12, $11,475. That was the first payment to crime intervention alarm for the access control system at the treatment plan.
Wait a minute, you said treatment plan?
I'm sorry.
Community center.
Community center. My fault.
You said first payment. What's the total about?
I believe it was $22,000 and a change.
I have a question. Why didn't that go on the community center expenses and then a transfer of money, showing that money coming in, a transfer for the community center?
Either way, that money would have come from the general fund.
But then you can track it easier on the seeing that that's where it's supposed to be, put it where it's supposed to be.
Well, I guess I would disagree with that because the line item in the general fund says community center expenses.
They can pull a QuickBooks report at any time, like you could just call up all of the community center. That's the, the beauty of QuickBooks.
Yeah, I think your question is why did we
Yeah, I know.
Pay it out and then transfer from general fund? Either way, that, like I said, that money's coming from the general fund, but we delineate that in the general fund by using that account number as community center expenses.
Just more clear that it is for the community center than having to go through all of this.
But if we would show the transfer as an expense, it would show a transfer to the community center fund. So it wouldn't, it would actually be less delineated that way because you wouldn't know what exactly that expense was for. We keep that in that line item and call it out on what it is, it's easier to track that in the future.
But then if you go for the whole year of the community center and you add up the expenses, it's gonna be $11,475 short, correct? If you're looking at the community center expenses pages?
If you're in that fund?
Well, I'm, I'm saying if people have these right here that you can get at the meetings, it's not going to be listed. So really, the community center expenses weren't $6,400 for the month. You gotta add that 11 to that 6, correct?
If you're looking at the entire budget of the borough, yes, you need to grab.
That is how all the accounting is done across the board. I mean, we don't, we don't split out things for separate buildings. It's just that the community center is something that you look at and you say that, yeah, that's an entity. But, you know, we still have funds that are split up between different accounts for...
But they come out of their own accounts. The proper, sewer comes out of sewer, water comes out of water, there are phones, there'd be all that, they come out of the right accounts.
Not for things that cross, like the office funds, things like that.
No.
Well, they, yeah, they do get split.
They do.
Yeah.
They get appropriated to each, each thing, but not...
Yeah, so they're taking out their proper fund. When I brought up earlier this year about things not being transparent, being hidden in the general fund, this is the exact thing I'm talking about.
Well, as an example, there's not a separate account for Smoke on the Rails. It's in the general fund under 439, but you can pull that all out.
Because the borough puts that on, that would be out of the general fund.
Yeah, I...
I'm bringing it in again.
In, in a perfect scenario, the community center fund would be completely self-sufficient, but that's not the cases we've discussed before.
Never happen.
The general fund needs to be able to supplement that as a borough-owned facility and, and asset and service.
And people outside the office could have a better thumb on the heartbeat of that if all the expenses were coming out of that fund to see what the true expenses were and just having the money transferred, not putting it over in the general fund, so.
Also on page 13, there was an expense for $815 to Warehouse. That was for plans developed to be able to build that, that storage area inside the gym. Because it's a commercial space, we have to follow the same regulations that we impose on others and make sure that we're pulling a commercial building permit and following state UCC guidelines. So that was the expense for that. Also on page 17, there was a question about sludge disposal and Cinegro. Basically, those locations that sludge from the wastewater facility is all to is managed and maintained by Cinegro. We do not have, that's on them as a contractor basically to take care of that and find those facilities and, and monitor them. Page 22. Question about the volleyball nets at the community center. In the past, those were always purchased by the borough, so they needed replaced, and we replaced them.
Have I entertained a motion to accept the treasurer's report and the audit?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Has? My vote is aye. We're still able on March, got a call?
Yeah, we, we were able to, as we discussed, we had the proposal updated with Warehouse just last week, so we have that updated. We have everything executed with the county as far as the grant proposal, and we're currently working with the developer as far as their contribution to that. So the next step is now that we have everything, we'll bring it back in May and, and get council's approval on it to move forward. And then that's the point where we start interacting with all the interested parties and working with everybody involved to find out what, what's needed at the heart, what we're looking at going forward and create that master site plan and feasibility study. So, yeah, all preliminary at this point, just trying to get everything aligned before we take the next steps and move forward.
Do you still have sign regulation?
My secretary's working on it.
I was going to say something about that. I had talked to several businesses in town, and they wanted to do some signings. And I looked at some of the things, and we, I think we probably should look at some of that again.
Yep, we're getting, we're gonna get there.
Yep.
All right.
Bye, next meeting?
Yep.
Stormwater channel update?
Council's direction from last month, Arrow did recent department application, and we did acknowledge recent issues. And now we're again in their queue and waiting on their comments.
And this is the final, and this has been advertised for the quality of life ordinance?
That's correct.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the ordinance providing for the issuance of violation tickets for certain offenses and violations in the New Freedom Borough Code to permit the expeditious resolution of such alleged offenses. This has the changes in it, the mayor's board. Would we entertain a motion?
We'll move. Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I'm in favor of this. I think that we need this. All right, as I've stated before, in February, the council and the solicitor agreed to change it to must, but when we came back in March, it would change to will, which we haven't even talked about, and some shall. And I've been assured that it means the same thing, that this is going to be enforced with the wording that's been here and that it's gonna be enforced as presented. So I just wanted to put that out there. Now, you know, I brought up the Supreme Court, and it needs to be changed to must, but...
The only ones that weren't changed were the ones that were added and they weren't correct, if I recall correctly.
No, they were all, I believe. They're all, but, size of point, but I think it, it, it will be good.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Has? My vote is aye. Okay, and the intergovernmental agreement of cooperation? This is the final.
This has been advertised, it has been approved by Tru's Berry ownership as presented.
So I would entertain a motion to accept as written?
Make a motion, we approve the ordinance with the intergovernmental agreement for recreation.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Do we need to change where that period is?
Where what is?
Andrew knows what I'm talking about. We just talked about it prior on the page three, third line from the bottom. It was kind of a typo or somehow better than that. Accounting of all the commission finances, period, it should be. It says including, period.
Now, so there's an extra word?
Yeah.
I think we just need to note that, and then I'll work with time and just reprint that page note.
Doesn't really change anything.
No, not.
I thought maybe there was an omission there of the sentence, but...
What do you do, amend? Should I amend the motion?
You can have it as there it is.
Okay.
I think that's just a typo.
Yeah.
So I'll make sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Has?
No.
My vote is aye. We had the financial statement, the auditor service, was that what you were gonna report on that?
Yeah, the auditor will be at the May 8th council meeting to present the audit findings from 2022 and answer any questions that council may have.
Second, we, we tried to advertise something earlier or just at the normal time?
That's up to council. I just presented it as it would be during public comment, but that, I think that's...
Okay, senior center lease agreement.
So if you recall, there was a request by the senior city, senior center to extend the current lease until June 30th of 2023 to match their fiscal year. And I would take a look at their, their lease. We did meet with them, and after council reviewed the proposed lease back in September... And I would take a look at their their lease. We did meet with them and after council reviewed the proposed lease back in September. We met with them and went over everything. They requested a couple of changes, which are highlighted in yellow on your lease. And. Spoke about a couple of things and we just wanna get that approved, obviously, before July of of this year.
So the things in yellow, great changes, or they just bring bring attention to it?
The items highlighted in yellow indicate changes from what was reviewed in September.
Was the old, was the old lease two years or was it one year?
It was two years, I believe it was two.
So we have some questions now?
Sure.
I'll make a motion first, right? I move the week, approve it.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Who's using room one oh seven for storage?
That, I believe is the, isn't that where they're keeping the volley, or pickleball nets and the equipment? Where is it? It's hard to keep track of.
Yeah.
Which room's where?
It's on the hallway leading back to. One oh eight, one oh nine. Should we go back to the main hallway, make the left? It'd be behind you, on your left.
Isn't, isn't that what REC is currently using? Isn't that why we had to?
One oh six.
Get that door open in the hallway? That's one oh six, you're saying, Erica?
REC is using, going one oh six, you go all the way to the back, open another door, that's what REC uses.
Right, you open that door and it's on the left.
Who's using one oh seven?
Actually, no, I'm sorry, one oh seven is where the computer is for the HVAC system and where. The uh, computer is now for the access control, and that is utilized by REC.
One oh seven was full of holiday items. It's really confusing.
But it also is where the computer is stationed, right?
Yeah, it's the computer and I think that.
HVAC stuff in there too.
Yeah, one oh seven. Holiday and totes and all kinds of stuff. It's just, it's four walls, there's no door in there, and you have to get from that hall where we're talking. Is it? Yeah. Who's this office stuff? It's like a pool, it's like a pool room.
That was dry, I, as I recall, isn't that dry storage, the tasteful occasions was you were saying?
No, that's over one oh six. So. One oh six. That's where the REC is. Tasteful occasions is in this side of one oh six. Just this. I guess our stuff, it's paint and other things. So who is one oh seven?
Let me see a picture of that one oh seven, that's.
For all the holiday stuff and the totes all up in there?
You think that's the senior citizens are used?
Well, it's not, it's not on their lease and it's not on tasteful occasions lease, I just, I don't know.
Well, that we can investigate, but probably should finish out the lead, this lease first.
Well, in this case, if they're utilizing that and it's not on this lease, it would be.
It's my, I have to ask these questions to know if the lease is valid here. So who's using room two oh two upstairs?
That's the Boy Scouts.
That's, so just only the Boy Scouts?
Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, yeah.
Only them, okay. And then at a previous, I think it was in November's meeting, I had asked who pays for the water and sewer at the community center and it's, you said it wasn't billed. But I see it on here, they're paying for water and sewer. How much water and sewer do they pay for?
I thought it said we pay for water and sewer.
No, utilities, these sir shall pay. These sir shall pay the water, sewer, gas, oh, so us, so we're paying, so, what about, they were gonna start paying for gas and electric?
It's not separated out. It's included in their square footage.
Just included in the stair square footage. Okay, well, that was. I'll look this up over here, um. Let's see, and I'll just say again about the measurements of the community center. With the measurements that I have, the senior center, just on the three rooms that I had measured, is being built approximately two hundred and twenty-three. Feet more than what it says the room sizes are here, so I've just put that out there. And that's all I have.
Why do they get, have keys to two kitchens? Don't they only have one kitchen?
Yeah, there's only one.
Yeah, it says, uh, key to each of the kitchens on page three. That kinda confused me.
Okay.
New Freedom Borough Office, let's see, shall, shall be given a key to access the center through the main door and be given a key to each of the kitchens.
Actually, that was, yeah, I have that too, because isn't it taken away?
Correct, they do not have access to the.
Yeah, I, I think that's a leftover from when they used, I guess what he called the blue room for their, um. For their nails on wheels. They had access to where the, um, where the cooler is now.
That wasn't a part of the kitchen.
Basically, that.
That's a room number, it's just the original.
Yeah, I think it just needs to take out.
Okay, because that kinda says, there, since there's only two kitchens, one's tasteful occasions, one's upstairs, they really. And that is, and that is, uh, you and I talked earlier, that's room two oh six, correct? You said that's the kitchen upstairs.
Two oh six is upstairs.
Okay, do you have, do you have a two oh five, what's two oh five? What's the, do you have a lion's room listed as two oh six or two oh five?
That's listed as two oh six as well, two oh five is.
You have to go in there.
I thought that was two separate rooms, okay.
Two oh five's the storage in the hallway that's utilized by tasteful occasions.
So the other, well, the other lease for tasteful occasions, gas and electric, isn't that figured?
It's in the square footage price, but it was figured out separately. We did a, uh. We did a calculation for all the BTUs that they used and included it in the square footage price. This isn't quite as elegant, we didn't figure out exactly what they were using.
Where the confusion came in. On how the lease is worded there.
So you're gonna make a change of the, just to one kitchen then?
Yeah, just take out the line with the extra keys.
Or just put the kitchen in room number two of two oh six?
Yeah, that'll work too. Any other questions?
And you, you took out the two oh six before, they could only use it on these days at this time, that was taken out, so they're not. Cornered into, they can only use it during this time.
Right.
Oh, why?
Well, they're utilizing the kitchen space to prepare their meals. They have to have the access to that.
It won't affect the lines at night.
Right, this is just for their lunch meals.
Okay, 'cause it says they have those rooms twenty-four seven, right? It says twenty-four seven, I think that's why we had taken that out, because originally. Alright, it says twenty-four seven?
It doesn't say that, it doesn't have to say that.
Uh, use, property twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week, let's see. Is it? Or is it Monday through Friday?
Well, but they have fundraising activity on the weekend. Where they need access to their facilities.
And we're willing to give up six uses of the auditorium throughout the year?
That was the request that they made.
Let's see.
Again, that's.
Seems like an awful lot.
And then, I almost forgot, that lease, lease or, so we're providing cleaning of the common areas, no us, and twice a week. And the store, we're getting away the snow and the ice.
Yeah, which we already, but they asked that it be included, I'm, my guess is that they were replicating that off of another senior center in the area.
What do we, what thoughts do we have on the six uses of the community center?
That's a lot of money if it's on a Saturday or Sunday and we lose. If they take one and somebody wants to hold on. Event, what is it, six hundred?
What did they use last year for uses?
Didn't we give them, was it two?
Yeah, they got a couple of three. And at this point, the way the resolution is worded, they would get the charge, it would be on a weekend, we'd have. The norm has a non-coffee.
That's the contract, that's not in here, though, that's, that's just the contract says, right?
Yeah, if you were to remove that and they would do, if you were to lessen the number that you give, if they would come back to more, it would be a head on rate.
Right.
I just think six is an awful lot, I mean, that could be.
I think, I think three makes sense to me, I, I mean, throw that out.
Would to me. I mean, if they come to us and they've got something going and we don't have anything else. In the, in the hopper, we might wanna feel generous and say, yeah, nothing else is going on.
I, I, and I think you could tell them that, you know, it doesn't have to be in writing, but you could tell them if they have something special, just like the lines comes to us and says.
You could say, subject to availability of the auditorium space.
I really don't wanna schedule this stuff at this time, you know, probably a month ahead.
That's why I say, give them, you know, schedule three. It's up to you guys.
I saw a lot of nodding.
It makes sense to have three in the, in the lease and then have them request the other minute, then you have. As long as they're having fundraising, you know, they're really trying to help.
Right. So change it to three and if you understand it, they can come back and ask.
But do you wanna say three weekend and three weekday? They can plan around that a little bit more. You probably don't use it during the week, uh, or.
Well, we're. You don't want, you, you don't wanna kick out pickleball too much more.
Well, they don't have any, they don't have a special item here.
They don't, that's what I'm saying, right. If you, I worry about the weekends.
That's where we make in our money is.
Well, we're cutting it down to three, what difference?
Well, we're not making money.
Leave it three if they want more.
We wanna make that change then, three, three weeknight and three.
We just.
I'd just say three, three, and then we'll work it out if they want more.
Yeah, if they come to us and the.
Right. Everyone's saying yes, so okay, so change it to three.
Is that three, so it says three during the term of the lease, your lease is two years. So they have six, but that was during the term, the term is two years, just keep that in mind, so.
Well, they could do all six in one year for one, two.
Say three per year over the next year.
There you go, three per year. Three per year.
Three per year would probably be.
Maximum of three per year. So works out to six.
So it's no change.
Well, probably, now.
Put the per year, I hear they can.
Yeah, just have to make sure they understand.
Reserve it for six weeks, Sundays in a row.
But they could, they wouldn't have it for the rest, for the two years though.
Right. Anything else? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Pos?
No.
My vote is aye. Solicitor's report?
Um, I do a little homework, 'cause we got that, we got an email updating, uh, I guess there's some more complaints about the breach, breach property. I understand that they may have moved, some folks, those folks may have moved out. One on the, one on the street, but one.
They were talking about it and then they, I don't know that they moved. But I understand that the whole situation on Wanita has pretty much been. According, here, let me pull.
I didn't, I didn't hear, who's moved and what's the situation?
So there was a complaint, another complaint filed, and the concern was, is now they're getting into warmer months that the regions would start cooperating again. And so I had done some homework on our dangerous building ordnance to talk, talk about how you can go through that process. When I talked to Andy today, he had said he had heard from mayor that someone may have moved, that there'd be some, the tenant may have moved some of their junk out in the U-Haul, in the U-Haul.
Oh, that, yes, yes, somebody moved, that is correct. They kinda cleaned out junk and I think the owners, uh, went in and made them move out some junk, clean out whatever. Um, they changed, um, companies and according to the other, uh, residents of Wanita. Things have pretty much straightened out. Um, here, I mean, it says dead and dying roaches, uh, uh, we have not seen in a while, um. It seems like they're slowing down, they're, they haven't seen any for about a week. So what Andrew did by making them give us copies of receipts from Oregon or whoever, whatever exterminator they were using. Seemed to, uh, seemed to help, um, I know we didn't get there yet, but the junk in the back, I think we jumped on them about that, correct? And that's.
Are you saying the person that created the problem is moving or they're just moving junk?
They thought they were moving, but they are just moving junk out of the house.
So, long story short, I have the process for what we can do if that becomes an issue again, but if it's not, I mean, you should monitor it and. We didn't get a warmer reception at the M D J the first time around, so I'm not sure. We're gonna get it the second time around, but at least we'll know who the tenant is.
Can you make the process available to council?
Yeah, I, sure, yeah, yeah.
We'd like to see what the process is.
The issue, the issue really is, is how we would get in to investigate the property. Because.
So property is administrative warrant.
We would have to go through the administrative search warrant unless the tenant or the landlord, the landlord could be listed as well to inspect. If not, we would have to get administrative search warrant by going through the M D J's office and showing the probable cause to get into inspecting.
Have we ever asked the owner to go inside that building or their home to inspect?
I don't know, we never got in touch with the air until the hearing, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is the owner fed up with the tenant?
Owner's friends with the tenant? My understanding, the owner has other properties in other municipalities that are just as bad, if not worse than this one. So I'm not sure that the owner's gonna be receptive, one way or another, but we certainly should ask them if if the tenant would let us in.
The owner has been much more receptive to the other residents on Wanita. The owner has been much more receptive to the other residents on Wanita. In questioning, at first he was rather hesitant and, um, not so nice, but he's kind of warmed up to the fact that there's a problem here and he better take care of it.
That's good news.
So right now, things seem to be copacetic on the inside, other than them removing the hysteria. And the last time I looked, the junk in the back. As long as they're not throwing garbage bags over the, you know, outback instead of putting them in the trash bins, you know, I think we've accomplished a lot, but we're just gonna have to keep an eye on the property and ask the residents to continue to report those contractions to us. Which they don't seem to have a problem responding or asking, I've got page after page.
Could you just shoot me a copy of that?
Yeah, yep.
For all the council.
Yep.
Anything else? Managers' report?
Just a couple of quick items tonight, as we noted earlier on the treasures report, we are about finished with the access control at the center. We spent a little bit of time today programming some fobs and getting them distributed and authorized to users in the community center. That's tenants and the rep commission, so that'll be a kind of fluid process until we're able to make sure that everyone has access, at which time we'll disable the manual locks and everyone will be utilizing the access control going forward. A couple other things, April, uh, it's already time for the second municipal newsletter, so if you have any suggestions on newsletter articles, we're about, I would say seventy-five percent complete with the newsletter getting ready to print, getting it sent out again. Again, the goal here was to create that quarterly issue. So if you have any ideas, please email me and let me know. We did complete work with York County nine-one-one in the month of March to go through an address verification process where the, they provided through their software, a little over fifty properties that needed to be properly identified, so if there was an emergency, they would be dispatched to the proper address. So they utilized their software, sent us a report, and we went through and reconciled everything against our building software, tax records, and any kind of other contact information that we had. So obviously, it's important in time of emergency that the dispatch has the correct address, so emergency responders are getting there on time. Uh, York County is in the process of updating the hazard mitigation plan for the entire county. All municipalities are expected to participate in that plan and that basically allows state and federal funding, uh, should the need arise at a time of an emergency, natural emergency. So that process, the county is hoping to finish up by February of twenty-twenty-four. So we will have, uh, additional reviews of that over the next little less than a year. And I believe that gets adopted by resolution, inclusion in the hazard mitigation plan by the end.
County owns is your model one, so.
Yeah. So that process is started, uh, there's mandatory meetings that the municipalities have to participate in. Uh, you did see, we provided an update to the residents, there was a survey that went out to all residents in York County as much as possible, uh, to review that plan and ask about any potential hazards that they're aware of, uh, for inclusion in the updated plan. Other than that, um, anything else was on the agenda, unless anybody has any questions?
The voting machines will be arriving in a couple of weeks, what is the plan for those?
Plan for those would be to secure those in the room, um, upstairs. That's not being utilized.
What room is that?
Is it two oh one?
Yep.
Very top of the steps on the, on the right.
Tasteful occasions have stuff in that room.
It will be.
Where's all that equipment gonna go?
That's their problem. Yes.
Will I say that, but. So tasteful occasions items will not be in room two oh one for them to enter and they will be locked away in that room.
Voting machines will be secured for us, that's correct.
Yep, and then Eric can come down to get the key. Oh. Can somebody show me where those floodlights are for that parking lot? That's been brought up a lot of times when you're out there, just those under hanging lights are on, but those big ones aren't on and nobody knows where. Could somebody please show me?
Donnie, did you change that lock that we discussed?
Yeah, I probably did, I probably did.
Within the last couple of weeks? Think, somebody, somebody replaced the lock, it's not the one that fits the same key.
Well, I'll take a look at it, you know, maybe keep changing the box.
Yeah, but that was, that was weeks ago, we're past that.
I didn't know, he was on vacation, so.
Well, I had the lock changed because that's where some of the access control was going, we didn't want anybody, uh.
But that's where the switch is for that light, correct?
And that's why, and we're, Donnie was looking at possibly relocating that switch out of that closet.
And we're still looking at moving that, correct?
So then can I have a fob to turn that on? Is somebody else gonna turn it on? Who's gonna turn that light on?
We'll make sure it gets turned on for election. And then past that, I think we're looking at an alternative system so that it could be a key on and off switch.
Right.
It's dark out there. Especially when you can't see.
Well, I mean, it's, we've had some close, it is, we've had some close calls, now we're using, utilizing the auditorium for bingos and things, and we get elderly people up there trying to get back to their cars, you know, and it's, we've had some close calls. We need to have that bid.
And can that room be aired out? It smells very bad, room two oh one, because of that equipment and the barbecue pits that are sitting in there, like, air the house where those machines come in.
Yep.
It was, it was pretty strong.
Well, uh, can I make a suggestion? They don't rent that room, why don't we just say, you gotta get that stuff out of here?
Right.
I mean, now.
Right.
They should have gotten rid of it the first, the month, yeah.
Something we get complaints about a lot, and every once in a while I get the smell, and when we went in there for the, um, the blood drive, the, the room smell, it, it smells like there's always a gas odor, especially when I've first opened up. I don't know where that's coming from, or it's a pilot light that's out, or it's, I know they test it and it, and it always tests clean, but I'm just concerned that my nose doesn't lie, so.
Yeah, I mean, they even went as far as having Columbia gas.
Yeah, I know, but it just seems like it's, okay.
Nice to mention that, coming in here, when these trash cans arrive sometime around then, is, is there some freshener or something? It is extremely strong. It almost makes me feel nauseous coming in.
In the lobby?
Yeah, like when, I remember like.
It's the same as the Lions' room.
Remember in the eighties, you used to sprinkle that powder stuff on your carpet and.
No, it's.
Back to vacuum it, it was like so strong.
There's one on the wall as you walk in.
And I thought it was the trash cans at first, but somebody else mentioned it was at the community center too, so I thought it was an air freshener.
Yeah, air freshener.
Extremely strong.
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah. So, uh, we've discussed that the Lions have had to move out of their room upstairs and go, take over the scout house because we've had two people that just about passed out that have asthma and it triggers their asthmatic attacks. And we thought we were gonna have to call the ambulance, so they've moved their meetings now.
Because of an air pressure?
Yep, it closes, it closes a month like that.
There's an air pressure on the.
Well, we were going to, we talked about it, and then they decided they would just finish out the, their season in, uh, the scout house. But we're gonna have to do something before next year. And I don't know whether there's, you know, you can turn it up, turn it down.
Well, you can get unscent, unscented air fresheners too.
I think you were gonna talk.
Or even ozone, ozone purifiers.
Yeah, that just affects the odor itself.
Anything else? Uh, president's report, I just wanted to mention, I don't, Kim, if you were gonna mention it or not, but, uh, Kim and myself and Ryan went to the fire engine dedication.
Yes.
And, uh, that was very well received, the Wilhelm fam, family got the, uh, plaque. And, uh, it was interesting that they pushed the engine back into the firehouse and everybody pushed it in, I think, I think they cheated and got a little help, but, yeah, but, um, that was an interesting. Um, and then they had a little luncheon after. Uh, we also, uh, Denny and Kim, myself and Ryan, were you there? Vortex?
No, that was, uh, during the day.
Okay, that was you, you were there.
We, we looked somewhere.
Yeah, so this ended a table, went to, uh, Vortex, it was ribbon cutting, uh, well attended by York County executives and, uh, Kristen Gobes Hill was there. And, um, again, it's a, it's a rail trail initiative, it's a new business on the rail trail. Uh, it's really kinda neat, you probably should just stop by to look at it if nothing else, but, um, and good stories, I mean, the guys really, it was their lifelong ambition to start this business and they succeeded in, in starting it, and so it's another business for New Freedom. One thing I did wanna mention, and something that I was concerned about, was how it impacts, um, Seven, because, you know, they now have another restaurant in the area, but these guys are actually talking about, they, they're actually cooperating and they don't have a big dinner menu, so they send people over for dinner, after they have a, have a beer, they go over for dinner to Seven, and they're, they're being very cooperative and I hope that continues, but it was kind of nice to see that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, of course, you all have the, uh, balance sheet, there's reports. Uh, I was a little concerned that we had so many incidents last month, um, from, uh, February twenty-sixth to three twenty-five. And apparently, everybody did, across the board, it wasn't just us.
We're actually a less higher than we.
Yeah, they, it, it's, chief says, you know, it's getting warmer and the crazies are coming out. So, and if you notice, we had a lot more, um, I had been asking them to, uh, uh, enforce, um, some different things, and as you can see, New Freedom, we went from traffic citations up to ten, warnings up to thirty, so we know that the police are keeping an eye on the roads, on the traffic, on the parking, um, which is good, which is what you folks have been asking for. Uh, we've asked them to kind of sit at different spots in town, you guys are gonna be on that list too, as soon as we get those signs up. But it's, it's just one of those things that happens this time of the year.
Yes, sir. Is there any word, word on using the radar that, you know, for local police departments?
It's up for, well, it's still in committee, they're hoping, P S A B is pushing very diligently on that. Um, I'm gonna be going to the, um, their convention in June, and that is one of the main items that we are going to push. Uh, there will be a, a day when I go over to Harrisburg, and again, I'm gonna push our representatives, uh, to, to try to get that through. I gotta be honest with you, in talking to chief, it's, I don't know how much of a help it's gonna be in town because it has to be so many hundred feet, I think, from each speed sign. Every time a speed sign changes, they've gotta give them so many hundred feet to slow down. By the time they're slowed down, they hit another speed sign from forty to thirty-five to twenty-five, and they really can't do anything unless they're following them. It's, it's tough when you live in a, a small area like this, you know, like Leader, Leader Road, there's, well, you're, there you're hitting Shrewsbury Township coming into the burrow, I, I think, am I correct?
You gotta find, there's not, not much teeth in it.
You hit Petrie and hit, had over, uh, Leader Road out to, uh, York Road, that's Shrewsbury Township. And we can't do a darn thing, it's kinda like, um, uh, once you get up past Weathersfield into, um.
Hamilton Crossing.
I'm sorry?
Hamilton Crossing.
Hamilton Crossing, can't do, that's Shrewsbury Township, can't do a thing.
Michael, I know you.
Yeah, can we take that, uh, billboard, you know, when you're coming into town?
On, um, Campbell?
On Campbell.
Yeah.
Could you ever just post an ad? I know this sounds, imagery is important to me from my experience in life. You have a car that's smashed on there and you say, speed kills in that turn, and you just have a picture of a, you know, Pennsylvania State Police have to have accident pictures. And you just write two words, speed kills in that term, where everybody's shooting around there at fifty miles an hour. All these signs and all these other, um, you know, don't do this, don't, they're not gonna pay attention, they see that sign.
I'll tell you what I'll do, I have a, an in with Lamar advertising, let me see if I can't get them to make a donation. At this point, I would probably wanna wait until, maybe, you tell me what you think, maybe the beginning of next school year? Cause what, school's gonna be over soon?
Yeah.
Unless you don't care, you know, when it goes up, I, I have a tendency to look at, you know, school.
School season starts, they need a visual graphic, words and signs aren't gonna do it, a picture will do it.
Let me, let me contact them, see what would work out with them, because they have to donate, I think, seventy billboards a year. And that's not a big one that they, you know, and maybe, you know, I can come back if they don't wanna donate it, we'll come back with a cost.
Just, is that one of the ones that's paid, is it like a rotating that different businesses pay each month?
Oh, yeah.
Say you check the calendar maybe of when, who has it, you know, kinda.
Well, they'll, yeah, they'll know.
Yes, to pay in advance, yeah, just to kinda see.
They'll, where's Ginny? Her husband, I think, is on it now, isn't he?
Do you wanna know? Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's on.
But I know some of those book out several months, so it might be important, like.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said, I'll check, I'll check now to see what we could do for, uh, for fall on that. We had, um, sorry, wrong agenda. If anybody knows of someone that, um, is looking for a part-time position, we do need a recording secretary for the police commission. It's not free, we pay, um, it's one Wednesday a month. Couple of hours and then we write up the minutes. We're kind of getting, we're not desperate, cause we have somebody that's doing it, um, from Shrewsbury Burrow, which we appreciate, um, but just to let folks know that that would be a, a, a yeah, nice little, you know, pocket change.
You get one, get out of jail free card for that too?
They'll come in. You have to talk to chief about that. Police, are they going, how, how are the Knox boxes going? The questions come up for police to be able to access the Knox boxes. Is that done by code or actually by key? Chief is under the impression that those boxes, you call county control and they can boop and open it. Chief is under the impression that those boxes, you call county control and they can boop and open it. I don't, I didn't see that.
No, the fire company has a key.
Key, yeah, it's a key.
Is there certain numbers of the fire company that have a key to the box that's on the truck? And their key is matched to that person and they, they have to be given authorization to open that box and then all that's recorded, so they know the date, the time, who opened the box and then.
Right, I know how theirs works, but is there a way that we could work it so that the police have access to the Knox boxes?
I don't, I mean, that's, I've never heard that, I'm worried I have a year name misplaced.
I don't, I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure if it's legal.
So they just have to break in, which was what we were trying to alleviate.
If you've got, if you've got someone on the other side of the door, you don't wanna be trying to open it with a key. I'd wanna hit the door and, and go.
Uh, then it was a question that came up, yeah, from, from Chief.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Well, they have a.
They talked about building over in Stewartstown and somebody had gotten locked out and they have something, I guess in Stewartstown where, you know, if they have to use the Knox box, they have to list when, when it was used, the reason why, to let that person that was locked out out of a building or home it is, it's those sort of situations.
Yeah, but theirs, I don't think is an official Knox box, that's for.
Knox boxes are not supposed to be used for people that are locked out of their homes.
Yeah, that's, that was for Bailey Springs, I think.
I don't know what Bailey Springs is.
That's a, is that an over fifty, fifty community or?
Bailey Springs, I mean, you know, it means a mall portion, right, a shirt mall portion.
No, 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 the apartment.
Just residential.
The residential apartment.
I mean, I would be surprised, I've.
They, they have a way.
The police also don't wanna be the locksmiths for people to lock themselves out.
Uh, it was just they brought it up.
Yeah.
They brought it up and this lady couldn't get in and they knew that there was.
We'd have to call the fire company, that's the locksmith.
Yeah.
Or a locksmith, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we should start calling the fire company.
Well, the police would have to call, if there's a alarm that goes off that's not a fire alarm, the police are gonna search, but they're probably gonna call the owner. I was saying.
Can we move on to the next item?
Bake shops have been knocked off a couple of times selling miners, um...
This is the one on Constitution?
Yes. Um, I understand they put some new lights in and you're looking at that injury and that crack.
They received that.
Yeah, um, there is a leak over the ladies locker room in the police station. We're completely finished now with the roof, correct?
Already been fixed.
Okay, so it's done, great. Uh, we have a new officer that, uh, we're looking at, he spent four or five years in Maryland. Uh, he is currently getting his, uh, paperwork and everything done and he has a couple of classes that he has to, uh, attend. Uh, they're looking, uh, for him to possibly start in June. Right now, we're also going through our renewal for the, uh, officers for their contract. Glen Rock has given a, um, some feedback, they're looking at, uh, possibly going three hundred thousand a year, seven-year commitment with a three-year renewal, an hourly rate plus twelve and a half percent of what the current member rate is and an annual increase of no more than one and a half percent. And they are requesting one person on the commission, which everybody kinda...
They didn't request it.
We had a lot of, we had a lot of head shaking on that one.
They didn't request it, it was a recommendation from Sharky.
I saw, oh, I saw, I saw Glen Rock requesting.
When that meeting started, they said that they know they won't have a seat.
Okay, well, they, they definitely won't, 'cause there was a lot of head shaking on that.
So a one and a half percent, a one and a half percent increase, so like for, like, let's say as an example, they're paying a hundred dollars an hour.
Yep.
So next year, the most that they could pay would be a one and a half percent increase per hour?
Of the three, no, of the three hundred thousand. Three hundred thousand would not go up more than one point five percent.
The hourly rate could go up?
The hourly rate will be, would be twelve point five percent above whatever the member pays, but all these members pay differently, so I guess it would have to be an average of what the member pays.
And we are having a finance committee meeting to nail down what the hourly member rate is because there are a lot of, everybody, everybody has a different method of figuring out the hourly member rate.
So the one and a half percent is just to their three hundred K, so next year it would be hundred and one five, three hundred and one five.
Right, and if they don't, you know, don't like, you know, what that would do is to say, ours goes up three percent and theirs goes up one and a half percent, that means they're gonna be getting less coverage.
Right, yeah.
Basically.
It's diminishing returns.
So passing that on for feedback, think about that. Um, they have, are looking at an answer by August, getting into budget season.
So you anticipate then that they would give you a letter of withdrawal by October?
Well, they're.
Might get September.
They hired a separate attorney, their attorney is saying that our IGA isn't worth the paper it's written on when it comes to, uh, a withdrawal in twenty twenty-four, which was what we were looking at uh, because they didn't appropriately give their letter of withdrawal, uh, at the, uh, assigned time according to the IGA, but they want this to occur at the end of twenty twenty-three or the twenty twenty-four. So, that's where we are.
The current IGA would just have an amendment to let them transition over. I need to know, on what council is her, seven years, three-year renewal, twelve point five oh above what a current member pays, Railroad currently pays twenty percent above, three hundred thousand dollars a year, that three hundred thousand would go up by a maximum increase of one point five a year. A review period after three years, it's not a renewal, so they start the seven year, at three years in, we would just review it to look at it and say, "Is it working, is it not working, does anything need to be tweaked?" No split, um, no cut of any long-term obligation, they're, they would have no long-term obligation. Um, Chief talked to PMRS and also Peter Ruth. The only time that a long-term obligation would come into play is if, um, there was a open litigation and that happened, um, for, let's see if I have it here, Spring Grove. So PMRS says there's no long-term obligation, Peter Ruth also says the same thing. There was no problem with Southwestern left with any long-term obligations, the only one was Spring Grove, they had open pending litigation, um, and they had to have an ad hoc committee for that. So what is councils, uh, on that little package? It's, I take this as the framework, this is the building blocks, we're gonna go from here, it doesn't necessarily mean where it's gonna be, what's the feeling of the council?
Did you say Railroad pays twenty percent?
So, the standard is Winterstown paid twenty percent above what a member paid, um, Railroad pays twenty percent, it started out at twenty percent, then Glen Rock said, "Well, we're putting a lot more in, we're putting three hundred thousand dollars in, um, it should be lower," then it went to fifteen, then it went to twelve point five.
Railroad and the school district are completely separate animals. Railroad pays by the incident, by the hour. And it's not that much of a problem according to the commission because if we're going to Shrewsbury, we're going through Railroad anyway, it's not like we're going out of our way, which we are, going to Glen Rock. We're not going through Glen Rock to get to anywhere, was, that was one of the other comments.
Personally, I would like to see, uh, the seven years and then a longer renewal, renewal of minimum of five after the seven, maybe it's a ten-year with a five-year renewal, something in there, I think, needs to be worked on. The max increase, that, you know, could be adjusted and the one seat on the commission, I am absolutely opposed vehemently to that.
Everybody is opposed a lot.
The one seat on the commission, why, let's all be contract, you know, communities, if somebody's gonna get a seat up here, we need to be able to attract more municipalities, more neighborhoods and in doing that and having, uh, it was suggested at one point, well, if you have all these contract communities over here, they can have one person come and represent all of them. No, there, there needs to be a clear-cut definition, these are members, these are contract.
Did you say Sharky was in favor of the?
He threw, he threw that out there because when it very first started, uh, the representative for Glen Rock said in verbatim that, um, "We know that we will not have a seat on the commission." So, you know.
Why do you, why do you think that was offered?
You could get in Sharky's head and understand what happens in those wheels in there, I don't know. Well said.
So this is generic though, for any, anybody, I guess, it's not just for Glen Rock.
Well, right now, it's for Glen Rock, proposed by Glen Rock.
No, but what I'm saying is, the approval's gonna be for anybody that's gonna be a contract member in the future, it's not specific to Glen Rock.
We don't know that because it's.
Well, I mean, I don't see how, I don't see how it can be.
There's never been a contract member with a seat up on the police commission, yeah.
I'm just, I'm, I really, I'm not having a seat, I, I really do not have a seat, I'm just talking about the whole process right now. So Glen Rock is making, they're, they're making a decision on how the police commission is gonna do the contract stuff or that's their recommendation?
Yes, well, this is what Glen Rock is requesting.
It's the contract negotiation committee, so Glen Rock has three representatives and then the other three boroughs have their representatives.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, you know.
So it's not just them and it's, and it's not just for that, for their contracts, I guess, for anybody that is gonna be a contract person in the future.
Yes.
I, I think that goes without saying, I mean, no one's gonna negotiate something.
Doesn't necessarily have to be because it's not in the IGA, written up as IGA.
Railroad has twenty percent and they want, what'd you say, twelve point five?
Twelve point five, the.
I think that's a slippery slope, for, for Railroad to come back and say, "Well, why am I paying this?" Somebody else is.
The case that Glen Rock made was Railroad's only paying, you know, pocket change and we're putting three hundred thousand into the pie. Winterstown didn't pay, you know, this much, we're, they almost like, "We're paying this much, you need to knock down these percentages," that's what was being spoken of. So what, what is the consensus, what needs to be tweaked on?
So this is, this is just for the framework?
This is the start, this is the first negotiation.
And they're asking for, it'd be, you said, seven years?
Seven years, three-year renewals.
I would throw out there, just from a legal perspective, seven years is probably not enforceable for municipal contracts, could be binding future boards, typically about as far as you go out is five years in a contract. So just.
What's the reasoning for that?
Because you're, you're binding future boards who could be completely different than they are and you're the contractor.
Oh, even if it's five years, you're.
You, you're correct, you're correct, but you, like, York area regional, when they were doing their five, their contracts, lease contracts, with Jacobus, Dallas Town, Yo and Redline, when they were doing them, they only ever went out as five, as far as five years. We do trash contracts, we go out three years with two one-year extensions, so the borough council has the ability to look at those again. So it's, it's, we call it de jour, it's more of a beyond the five years is really.
But if you look at the IGA, it's definitely.
Did Peter say anything about the length of the contract?
You're governing yourself, you're not binding yourself, you know, you'll be better.
That's true.
This is, this is a contract for services, that's all this is, right, I mean, that's what you're looking at, is a contract for services.
Under this, yeah, with this circumstance, with that not happening, a member of the board, yeah, they're contracting for services.
Right, and I would, my argument.
Three hundred thousand dollars a year, not to exceed.
That would be my argument as a Glen Rock borough council member who gets elected in year four is you bound me down for the next three years of my, you know, term to pay that off.
I, I realize this might be.
Don't help them, we, we wanted to go as long as we can.
You want to be legally enforceable, right?
This might be beyond the question, but, I mean, right now, they're spending three hundred and sixty K, right?
Right about that.
Right about that, and now they're gonna cut back to three hundred. Where, where's the sixty K cut gonna come from?
The other three municipalities are gonna pick that up.
Yep.
But even for Glen Rock though, if they're actually spending three hundred and sixty K on police and they're cutting it to three hundred, what's the chief gonna do to make it so that they can only spend three hundred?
So if they have a pocketbook burglary or burglary or something like that and then the person is made whole, they will not continue to investigate that to see, like, who it was. If they have a stabbing, a shooting, uh, you know, breaking, those sort of things, they would investigate to find, you know, the, the person. It would, he spoke more about picking and choosing on what they're gonna put their time, you know, doing. If it comes to be November or October and they run out of their three hundred thousand, they would have the option of, um, paying more to get coverage through the end of that year or it was spoken of, they would just go to state police for the remainder of that time.
What are the other, like, northern and other, northern regions, are other people doing the same thing? Is there, is there a model yet that's followed?
So, so I'll just speak out again about what York area went through with Redline, with Redline. Redline had a murder and they went way over the contract hours and then everyone else was upset who was a contract member because they were getting less hours for the money they were paying. So this isn't, I mean, it's an issue in this kind of negotiation, you're gonna, you're gonna have to figure out a way to deal with that. They used to dial, I think, York area used to dial back patrol time, they wouldn't spend as much time patrolling those communities, so on and so forth. Usually the chief could adjust that, but if you have a, if you have a school shooting, right, God forbid, but if we have a school shooting or something like that in Glen Rock, you know, where there's a large.
Is that a school?
Well, I'm sorry, if there's a violent incident that involves a murder-suicide, you just had in hell all over the weekend, you know, and there's an investigation that goes on and they spend their time, what's that?
Isn't there an elementary school?
Yeah, I thought there was.
Yeah, there is over there, we got Friendship.
Yeah, they're not in the borough, they're in the district.
Township?
I know where the lines at there, but all I'm saying is, is it's an issue that has to be, it's a good point to discuss it because you can, that can happen and then your charter members and you're paying the freight and they're spending all their time.
Well, that's, that, that's my concern, I think we're setting ourselves up for, I mean, if I were Glen Rock and, and if you hit my three hundred K in October, I'd say, "Well, why'd you do that? You should've stretched it out," you know, but I don't know how you do that.
And I'm not sure.
Plus, I think it's a, I, I've always felt it was a safety issue too. You're telling the police, "Yeah, do less patrol time," so they're gonna be less familiar with Glen Rock Borough and then they're gonna go in and, and have to fight some crime or there's gonna be something going on, but they're not gonna know the lay of the land so much because they've had less patrol time. So it creates a safety problem, I think, for the police too. I don't know where this is gonna end up, but it's not.
I don't think you can switch mid-year to state police either. It's either or, or can you? Yeah, I, I don't.
I don't think you could pick it up in October.
Right, exactly, I don't, I don't know that that works.
Somebody has to cover, if they're already paying for state police anyway.
Well, they're not paying for state police anymore, they're, you know, higher paying for state police.
We, but they're still paying for it so they can request it.
We pay for it, but we also didn't pay for.
At least that's the way.
And what'll end up happening is, is if the state police aren't available, we'll go to, they'll go to Second Duke, which is southern regional, that's southern regional after as well. I mean, it, that's the way it works out.
I mean, it, that's the way it works out.
There's another fire department where we're second do, is it?
Sure is.
That's, again, that's what happened.
There's something, I mean, and of course, we would anyway, if somebody's being murdered, or something serious is going on.
Stewartstown.
Right. It wasn't Stewartstown.
I guess, I guess, just for, just to make the statement, and everybody can, but I, I would definitely agree with Erica. There's no, no way that they would get a voting member if they're gonna become a contract. I guess, given what Davey's saying about the contract length, I don't, I don't know. I guess that needs to be discussed with Peter Ruth, to see if we could go.
He's saying that that was fine. I mean, you can discuss it with Peter.
I can.
Yeah, that might be something to do. If you could do that for us, that would be good. I don't, I don't think that they should pay any less than what our current contract people are, I mean, if railroad's paying twenty percent, they should be paying twenty percent. The three hundred K.
Well, you don't want them paying the same as railroad, because railroad's pay, would be paying less. They would pay, be paying less than what the commission wants them to pay.
I think the suggestion is you come up with a standard to apply to all your contract entities, so that they're all paying at the same rate.
Railroad is not considered a contract community. They are considered an hourly.
That's a contract, yeah.
Why couldn't you make it all percent?
They consider railroad to be a completely different animal, that doesn't enter into this, just like the school board. The school board has negotiated their contract with southern regional, and so has railroad.
Typically, your school district's, will, will negotiate a separate S R O.
Which is a contract rate.
It's a, it's a school resource officer agreement. That's what they're called.
Well, railroad is a different, completely different animal.
What about the max one point five percent increase on the three hundred thousand dollars a year rate?
Well, I don't even think that's workable, but I, I mean, I, you know, they should at least, I mean, if I were Glenrock, I would at least try to match what anticipated inflation is. I mean, we have, we have, you know, close to eight percent this year. I mean, five percent was, was considered a norm for salaries and whatnot. So, I mean, if you lock yourself into one and a half percent, I don't know how you maintain any kind of coverage.
They're, they're, they're not concerned about that. They're concerned about the dollar amount, not the amount of coverage they're going to get.
All they wanna talk about is money. Their maxed out.
We have three hundred thousand dollars. That's what we can give them.
They had to take forty thousand this year, and move it over to be able to cover their coverage this year.
Right.
On what they owe.
Then I guess it doesn't really matter, one and a half percent or zero percent.
Now, you have to remember, too, they do not qualify for any of the rebates either that we've benefited from, too.
And you don't, but you don't know if you're gonna get those or not.
Yeah, well, you never know if you're gonna get those rebates back. But I think at some point, they probably will, but they definitely will not if it comes through.
Just to make it clear, they're not entitled to share the benefit of any rebates.
Correct. That's, that's part of it. Plus, plus, they're not entitled to any assets. There will be no asset split. That all goes to the three remaining, um, member communities.
But there's no buyout either. So that's fair, in my mind.
Correct. Correct. I would agree.
No buyout.
But then there's no asset split as well. So it works both ways.
But what about the liabilities?
Well, if it's just pension liability.
Well, the liability is.
I assume there's not, unless there's open litigation.
Right. But my opinion is, I, I would disagree with that. There's still ongoing pension liabilities.
Oh, that's a good point, and that never was, wasn't even brought up, was it?
You wouldn't have, I, I would agree that you wouldn't have a liability as it comes, as it comes to any insurance claims on your liability or property side, but you still have a continuing obligation to fund that pension plan. And those assumptions have been made based on them continuing to be a.
That's true.
A member. So if, even if you go that, I'm sorry, the, the terms kinda changed a couple times there, but even if you were to go that three years and say, okay, we're done. We're not, we're not a member anymore.
Or a contract.
How is that pension plan, how is the, how are those liabilities going to be funded going forward?
Good point, because right now, looking at what they wanna do, the three remaining.
Well, there's a couple, it's a whole formula, obviously. It's, it's based on the payroll, it's based on the number of active members, and it's funded through a contribution from the state. And whatever is not that, through that contribution from the state, the police department would need to put in.
And the state is based on number of officers.
It's based on per unit, per.
Yeah, per unit.
My recall of saying is, once, once, like, they retire and collect, then we're not funding that anymore.
The plan's still funding.
Yeah.
Yeah. The plan's funded monthly. So if.
Well, there, there is an annuity.
What happened to the Southwest officers?
That purchase is an annuity.
Well, no, I mean, what happened? They get no, they have no retirement stuff?
Yeah.
No, they get picked up, yeah.
So what happened there is, there's, there were two different pension plans. There was a non-uniform pension plan, which had one employee, which was the administrator. That plan was absorbed by, for administrative purposes, by Springbrot Borough. The rest of the plan was, and the assets were transferred to the regional police department as part of payments for the building.
Because some of the officers went there?
Actually, none.
None? I thought some of the officers got jobs elsewhere.
They did. Some went to, um, York area and other departments, but the planned assets were assumed by Northern Regional Police Department. And there's, there's a whole.
Cause they gave them the building. Don't you say?
Yeah, there's a whole, you know, there's a whole calculation.
You need a couple hours.
But that, that, my main concern would be continuing, I, I realize that there might not be any outstanding litigation liabilities, but.
There's financial.
There's financial liabilities with the pensions specifically.
Pension plan. That's the first I'm gonna ask.
Could there be healthcare liabilities, if an officer between now and then got hurt?
The, well, there could be, but if, the only way there could be.
The whole workers' comp plan.
The only insurance liability would really go is if you, um, closed the, closed the doors. Under the current plan with Benicon, the intergovernmental insurance cooperative, if you stop December thirty first, and bills continue to come in from those employees, that money has to come from somewhere. So in that case, if you would exceed your payments for that year, there would have to be money left over at the end of the closure to fund that. And that's the same with any entity in the intergovernmental insurance cooperative. But that, that's kind of a whole different ballgame. The, the main thing that would continue would be your pension liabilities. And because that's factored on that money going into that pension plan until that employee retires. If the money stops going in, that liability's still there.
And you, I, I think, you might remember when, actually, I think it was when Kim, when Kim was out sick, and we all went to the, and I took this place. We were talking about calculating the liabilities, and we said that we had to do that before we came up with whether or not we were going to be forgiving, or maybe direct transfer, or, so that has to be done.
My, my other concern is something that you pointed out. It's three sixty, round numbers. Right now, it's dropping to three hundred. So the remaining municipalities are kicking up a difference. But, but it's not only that, it's your normal increase.
Right.
So I, I think everybody needs to understand that that's a double increase in whatever year this occurs.
It was discussed that back in May, Glenrock said they were gonna put two hundred and forty thousand in at a three percent increase yearly. So putting in more money now at three hundred thousand is why that went down to a one point five percent. So when they put in more, percentages keep going down on certain things. It was said that the three hundred thousand provides stability for the boroughs and the department, and that we need to negotiate through this, so that we don't lose three hundred thousand, and have to come up with that between the three of us.
For what it's worth, the difficulty you're getting forced into here is, is when a lot of departments do this, they figure out what it costs them to provide police services on an hourly basis. And that's what they charge to their service, the municipality service. So they're not, you're getting forced into trying to back into that number. You're not telling them what it costs to provide police service. They're telling you what it costs. They're willing to back.
That is.
They're talking about buying A P U's still, not hours.
I understand that, but they understand, they, they know what they call, that those municipalities contract out, or those, there's, there's commit, police departments know what it costs to provide those police services, and then they factor that in, so that they don't have that double increase that he's talking about. They know that what they're charging those folks covers the time that they spend in those communities.
Another way to look at it is, they're coming to, to the police commission and saying, we wanna buy services. How much will it cost for you to provide police services? Well, we already know. It costs three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's what it costs.
Right, to get what you're getting today.
But they don't want that. They want something less. So that's, that's.
Less P P U's, and the rest of us will have to pick that balance up.
They say they have their taxes, they have the highest taxes out of anybody.
I, I know what they've been saying, but it's.
And they're, they're, they're looking at it as though they have us over a barrel, because it's either we pick up sixty thousand dollars, or we all pick up three hundred and sixty thousand, plus possibly what's coming down the pike with the new contract.
Do they offer more services?
Southern regional.
Offer yours, or?
Yeah, offer them what's theirs.
They'll get less services.
And they're okay with that.
At three hundred, they're, they are okay getting less services.
But why can't she back that into his budget?
He can. He will.
But you guys have to know you pick up the extra.
Do you know what, do you know, I, I don't have it on my, I have it on my phone someplace. Do you know how many P P U's they're getting now? Is it, six, five, five points, something?
Is it on the front of the newspaper?
Whatever they're getting.
Eight point ten?
Okay, they're gonna be getting a lot less than that. Once we break down that cost, which somebody's decided they will take that on themselves to see what that is. Putting naming names, that is good with Excel spreadsheets, they're this long. But we'll, we'll have to see, but they will get the B P U's, and they, you know, they won't get ordinance, you know. If they got a dog barking, they better take care of it. And they've talked about that. They've talked about issuing each.
Dog has a ticketing book.
They've talked, they've talked about issuing each council member and the mayor a ticketing book.
And most contracted for police services do not include ordinance enforcement, local ordinance enforcement.
Wow.
We had one in East Prospect, and they bought, you know, they bought services from River Windsor. They do not enforce local ordinances.
Well, they won't be getting that, and they won't be getting as much, you know. Chief says he can work it out. So they're getting the hours, only getting the hours they're paying?
So to be accurate, I'm getting that there's absolutely no seat on the commission. They should pay closer to twenty percent above what a member pays. The one point five percent increase yearly to the total money put in is not good.
It's not good, but that's their choice. They're just gonna decrease their own hours until they don't have enough.
And clarify, what happens, uh, if everything goes away, how do you fund those pension plans?
Yeah, the liabilities side of it.
That, that I don't think anybody's considering. That's a big.
That's a big concern.
So I had a quick question. How many, the, the, this committee that's doing this, what's the makeup of the committee now, again?
One person from New Freedom, Shrewsbury, Stewartstown, along with chief, and three representatives from Glenrock. They're a safety committee.
See, I don't understand why they have to have three.
They're not voting.
Oh, there's.
This is just a negotiation. This is just coming to talk, because that's their safety committee.
It sounds like the tail's wagging the dog here.
No, 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 they're not voting. They're just negotiating. I, I think, I mean, you're doing great. You know, you're doing what we said before, and I think, I think we're fine. I think it's gonna come back, and we're just gonna have to make a decision.
But I do think we're gonna have to make some concessions, rather than split the other thousand dollars.
Yeah, probably. It's nice not to have to pay three hundred thousand dollars, but I think, you know, we still have to define what the liabilities are. Otherwise, it's gonna bite us, you know.
Right. You're absolutely right. And I don't think, Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody even mentioned that.
What?
Did they, at the commission? The fact of, of what Andy just said.
Long-term?
With the long-term commitments.
Well, if they did, P M R, there's no long-term obligations.
No.
Peter Ruth said the same thing. Peter agreed. So possibly if the one point five, you know, if the seven year has to come down some, maybe the one point five max increase can go up some.
I, I personally, I like to, if, if they're willing to go for, go in, lock in for seven years, I mean, I, I'd love to see them lock in for as long as we can get, rather than go through this again in another couple of years. You know, in five years, or.
Why don't you talk to Peter and see what, you know, see when you could come back on that?
Because Peter's been in touch with their attorney on this.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to talk to him. I just, I, I can't, I can't think of the last time we really caught. Other than the municipal agreement, which provides for, it actually is for one-year terms, and it re-removes automatically. So it's not a five, it's not a seven-year term agreement, or a longer term agreement, intergovernmental agreement. It's typically a one-year, a three-year term that renews automatically. So then you have the chance to get out. What's the difference if they pay four years with a seven-year contract, and they quit on, quit you on notice and leave anyways?
I was just gonna say.
We'd be right back in the same situation we've been in.
Well, they're saying they're not going to say we're paying two hundred.
In there, also, it wasn't spoken of in the meeting, but there needs to be some language in there, that if they are gonna be, there's gotta be like a two-year notice. Something along those lines. But in addition, this needs to be figured out prior to August, before all of our, um, budget season comes around, so we know what is going on.
I'll, I'll talk to Peter about it.
I hate to ask the question, but whatever happened to the town hall? Are they gonna have that with their citizens? So that citizens know what's going on?
Well, unfortunately, there was some communication between their attorney and the commission. I've been told that Peter and that attorney will come, so I don't even know what that attorney said. I haven't been shown anything, so I, I don't know. I've asked to see it, but I haven't.
Well, their, their, their council has said, we basically have a town hall meeting every once a month.
You told me that, and I don't.
And.
This is, this is, I think, the.
Is it Evan Yeagle? Is that their attorney from C G A? Or they have?
I only saw him one time.
Yeah, yeah, it's Evan. It's Evan.
Yeah. Everyone taller than him.
I'm sure it's Evan.
The taller, slender man was at the meeting.
That's, okay, that's probably Evan. That's Evan.
But they've hired a different attorney.
That's who we're talking about.
Oh, outside attorney. Okay.
Okay.
I'll talk to Peter.
Uh, well, why don't you do that, and we'll go ahead.
But this is something that we're really gonna have to kinda jump on, because they want answers, and everybody wants answers by, like, December.
Well, they want, I mean, if, if they want answers in August, they want answers in August, they better at least give us one month of a meeting to discuss it, 'cause I'm not gonna do that again like we did.
Sharky was supposed to have out all this in notes. That didn't happen. So we're all kinda talking in our boroughs. Then we're going to, um, meet later this month, and then we'll have the next police commission meeting, and then hopefully more framework will be done, and I'll bring that back.
So Erica, what do you have on our heartburn list right now? So Erica, what do you have on our heartburn list right now?
I would say the heartburn list is the, definitely no seat.
Yep.
Five years.
Yeah, the five years.
The five years, then it's gotta go more than one and a half percent increase annual.
I would say the one seat, the max increase of one point five and just a question mark of can it be five or longer? And mild heartburn on the twelve point five percent above a member.
Versus twenty percent.
That's a separate, one, one is how much money they're putting in, that percentage will go up one point five. And then over here, whatever the members are paying, that would be twelve point five percent above what a member. So there are different percentages for different money. But I would say the most heartburn, the seat and, yeah, maybe the one, the one point five and the twelve point five and then the year, in that order.
So they have the seat, we have the same conversation we've had for the last three years.
Exactly, holding everything up, yep.
Three. Hasn't been twelve over.
Just changes the wording a little bit.
So Erica, when are you, when are you gonna go back to that? What's the next, your, the next opportunity to go back to that?
Shoot us the email on the.
April twenty-fifth, seven PM, Shrewsbury, is the next CNC meeting. And then so all the boroughs will have been able to meet by then, so we'll meet then with them and then we'll have our next police commission meeting, May third here, seven PM.
So it certainly wouldn't hurt. Especially our.
I would encourage everybody to attend the police commission meeting in May.
Can we do that, can we have more than four of us?
As long as we don't discuss decisions, yes.
Okay.
That's what I was told, just now, but yes.
Right?
But we're off and running again is what that boils down to.
Yeah.
And I don't have anything.
What's, what's the date, what's May's date?
May third, it's out here.
It's always the first Wednesday of the month.
In there's report.
There's a question, last gray, that means they didn't do it, it's something past, only when it's in black, something new.
For arrows report, yeah, that's just highlighting, bold text, I guess, is what we wanna call it, is current month gray is previous, that was done in previous months.
In warehouse, era. Public works.
Thanks for adding the detail, Donnie. It's a good idea.
Select a new water report, yeah.
So what, what tank is that?
That's a cold report.
Really, not when people moved into that neighborhood, they said that people wouldn't be able to see that thing. We just think that we got that new idea.
Yeah, real.
What are they working on in the picture?
Water.
Wastewater treatment?
For the layman's question, so it's thirty-seven thou, thirty-seven million gallons, twenty-one thousand from New Freedom, twenty thousand from Shrewsbury, but that's, doesn't add up to the thirty-seven, how did, what, like, did more come in, it was a process, is it just like, you know?
There would have been, railway would have been factored in, it's just not shown.
Have a question even higher.
So basically, there's, there's a little bit of a difference between on the, on the flow meters. It's not, plus you're also looking at what's being held. So the total volume coming in and the total volume treated. So there would always be a difference of what's held in the tanks, what's held in digest or what's going out. Two, or two won't always equal because.
I mean, what the report.
Yeah.
The PDP is deserved thirty-seven or whatever that comes out to for the day on the DMR.
Right, you're reporting the F load.
Right.
And then the roof on the Hedworth's building that's at the plant there was replaced?
Yes, yeah, that was a bunch of expense.
Thirty years old?
Mr. President, I have to rise to a question of privilege, I've gotta leave.
I'm sorry. Don't matter, don't, don't mess around with that.
My blood pressure's going through the roof.
But seriously, if you need something, I'm home tomorrow, I need a ride, if you need anything.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Don't matter.
Camera. Camera, okay.
We gotta show her.
We should, we should.
Sit down.
No, no, you shouldn't be driving.
Just go, just go.
His book for now?
Here, yeah, give me your cane. I've been actually bringing it back.
Let's call Denise and have her come down.
You wanna take him out?
He shouldn't drive it, no.
Can you take him one side?
He's diabetic.
Get ready to help.
Take, take him on.
Should I bring it around the other side? Should I bring it around the other?
Is there somebody at the fire department right now? At least get a, take his blood pressure to find out where he did before he was.
That's a really good point, like, you know, all the, all of.
Is he diabetic? Is he diabetic?
No, but he's on high blood pressure medicine and his, his blood pressure's through the roof and he just got dizzy. We probably should call somebody at the fire.
Really, somebody oughta take him to urgent care or something, he shouldn't, he shouldn't go home like that.
Why, tell him, take the state of the.
Message his daughter, she's a nurse.
No.
Did Burnell get with him?
Yeah.
But now we're riding, we're walking down. We could continue with the reports, I think.
There's four listed, there's four listed.
It's like five, it's here.
Oh, I was thinking it went out.
Cause he's in a little kid's desk.
Yeah.
Just note that two people left and they'll be back. Hate to see that. Anything else on wastewater?
Zounding?
Street cut permits, probably to gas, that's just they wanna cut in our street to do something and they have to get a permit to do so. What are they doing on the singer?
There's a driveway or any time, anyone.
To wait singer?
A lot of the times it's just, and they could be going out and replacing the connection on either side of their main, going into the service lateral, they might just be digging up a small area and making that repair.
On number two and three, criminal complaint was filed back in February.
We didn't receive any notification from the magistrate at this time that there would be any kind of hearing. My assumption is they're trying to locate individual to serve notice.
Okay, number four, five and six, it's closed, is that just considered what, you know?
Yeah, at this point, it's, it's basically leveled out with the resident key that they're utilizing as a garden flower bed.
It can go all the way to the road?
This is just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's really nothing to say, you know, if someone could plant things around a mailbox or, you know, a corner of their property that can go out and be very easy.
But I mean, it's all the way to the street, so if there's a storm, you can wash out into the street and everything.
Yeah.
Probably this picture shows, you know.
I believe there's roll code there.
Berlin, yeah.
I think, I believe one, one side is, the other side is.
One side is what?
One side is, is a roll curve.
Oh, yeah.
And the illumination, what, what was put up?
They put up flashing lights in the windows.
Nope, they were the ones that were already removed?
They were removed and apparently the property was sold.
What?
Or transferred ownership, I shouldn't say sold, transferred ownership of the business to a new individual who was not aware and put everything up and actually sent pictures of other things that they wanted to do that we said no on top of part three and that we had, we received video from a concerned resident who sent it live.
Mohammed no longer owns it.
We received a call from an individual that said he purchased the business and took over ownership and been running it and that he was trying to make changes and market the business, which is why they wanted to put the lights in to make it more attractive for people.
Just two items to note on the subdivision land development report. There will be a planning commission meeting held, to be held April twenty-fourth and that'll be for the review of the construction of the outdoor pavilion at Mason Dixon Baptist Church and construction of the solar arrays off of Pleasant Avenue in New Freedom.
I saw that on the announcement, but I don't think part of the.
What time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven?
No.
No, I think they're all at six.
Yes, I believe that was at six. Six, six p.m.
And then I see the proof lands Franklin Square, are they done? I don't see one.
They're still building, they'll, they'll, yeah, they'll be building.
Really?
Yeah, they've, they're commercial, building number two, they still have a lot of the residential units and, and commercial units still put out.
Okay. Committees, I'm sorry, recreation?
Wasn't able to attend this past meeting, Erica and Kim, did, right?
Kim and I.
Okay, and Kim was still here by the time I got here. Just wanted to note tennis, the New Freedom Summer Youth Tennis Program will begin on the first Tuesday after the school year ends, approximately May thirtieth. The program will be for six weeks, Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday and Thursday from nine to ten and ten to eleven and on Friday evenings from six to seven PM. Big Balls continuing to have a, another good month. The parade, the theme for this year's parade will be in honor of first responders. And I believe we mentioned it before, but concerts August nineteenth and September twenty-third. Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a quick one, on the tennis surfacing, is there a danger to the kids?
Hopefully more just to play.
Okay.
I have one question, the lights at the crossing on Main and Franklin, any update on those? I think you had mentioned last month about the machine being on, not backward, but.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just waiting on the parts now. Again, they were on water back in, in the contract being executed, so.
Yeah, I know everything is pretty much sitting there waiting, looks, looks like it's ready to go. And also not rec, not, not rec-related, but the, some of the streetlights look good. Looks like they replaced a few by runners. There's three on the other side of railroad tracks going up towards the community center. It's a nice difference seeing, you can get a real good view of the white LED versus the yellowish, whatever the other side is, so it looks really nice. Hopefully they'll be able to continue that, I guess, you mentioned, as they can.
It's pretty much a bill.
Okay. Hopefully they get, not so busy and they can fill us in.
Those are now high wings. Business development, we touched on. I don't think there's anything new on EMS and fire funding. Are we going to, we talked about getting an update on our friend of, of Lamont's.
Yeah, I can schedule that, we can do it for the next time, if you'd like.
Oh, we have, may we have the accountant come for it?
Well, right, we will, early in the, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good, yeah, why don't we do that, maybe we can meet at six or something. And I just, I'm sure it's gonna be like, not a whole lot of progress, but.
Right.
We'd like to keep up on it.
I can schedule that with, please, um.
Sespa Centennial?
No, about, the only thing I have to add is we're, your tickets for the dance, that we're gonna, we're gonna start selling, that are making them available.
Yes.
And.
They're, they're in, um, we'll bring some back, cause, cause we took, we took the whole box, I mean, yeah. So we'll bring some back, so it'll be available in the borough office, and, uh, I think Jenny, Jenny asked for some to sell, and some to use, and, um, yeah.
And then, we're also, we're working on getting things together for twentieth, our May twentieth for the parade and everything, but that sort of changes, but I think we're gonna have a fairly good parade, the way it looks. Pretty good size.
Do you have a rough, rough estimate of how many participants? Or be individuals, or?
And the last time I checked on the sheet, there, there was going to be between, somewhere between twenty and twenty-three floats, for sure. So that right there is, and that was, and that's probably more than that now, because I was gonna ask Callie Anne, but, but, uh, she, but she left, I.
Um, yeah, um, we probably need decorations for the prom, too. I'm trying to get the scouts to do it, but I can't get a firm commitment, so, um, I don't wanna get, be, be there the day of, trying to figure out what we're gonna do, so. The thought is to have, like, the four corners, or three corners of the building be, you know, at, at inception, and then fifty years later, and fifty years later, so, anyone who has any ideas, or anything, will be more than happy.
Yeah, that's, uh, and also, you, you could probably use items.
Yeah, I'll share.
Speaking of scouts, uh, Bernal's gonna be making a speech on the thirteenth, the third day. Part of Sespa Centennial, the Scouts Academy.
Oh, okay.
Well, and what, it's, it's gonna be the items from New Freedom, that, I mean, it's, uh, but, but it's, it's all part of our program.
At the scout house up here?
Yes.
And that's on the thirteenth?
Yes, there's seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, so that's the, this, uh, Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be a good time to try to pin them down.
Yeah, for the dance, um, is there gonna be like a selfie, uh, area?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're gonna do.
Yeah, I think it'd be neat to have, maybe like, outline it with old pictures of New Freedom or something, and.
We're trying to get, if, if anyone, if anyone out there is paying attention, uh, we're trying to get prom pictures, oh, you know, just old prom pictures, even, you know, like, when I went to the prom with my blue tux and my ruffled shirt.
And the big hair.
Put on a wall.
The big hair, right.
Yeah, big hair, whatever, yeah, so, yeah, that'd be nice, and we're gonna decorate a wall with that, and that could be like, we're the selfie station, just to.
I have a call into signs by Jipson, or the signs by.
I'm sorry?
I have a call into the lady who does the signs.
Oh, yeah, signs, yeah.
I hope that she'll do something.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Could be used velvet jackets, cause they're worth the wide hotels, and I think I still have one.
I still wear mine on occasion.
I can't wear them.
Did you get in it?
No. Not for years. Uh, no correspondence, anything else from the public?
I, we wanted you to know that, um, at the blood drive, there were a lot of comments about the sign, they liked the sign, and how many people pained to give blood because they saw it on the sign.
Oh, yeah, the one that.
It seemed like, you know, it wasn't really good thing, there's a lot of people evidently didn't know about it until they saw the sign, so.
Yeah, well, that's good. Ray?
Uh, I had seen Andy drew about this. You, the boroughs got a problem, a fairly big problem with the garbage collection, because they set them cotton picking cans down in the gutter and in the street. And I, I, I took, when I went home from talking to Andy, I counted twenty-two in the street from High Street to Main. And then that next Friday, my neighbors across, across the alley from me, mine, and my neighbors across the street was in the gutter. The next week, the same thing, only the neighbors across the street was laying in the, in the street.
And you wind them up on the sidewalk, right?
Oh, shit.
Yeah.
You better believe it, Constitution's narrow enough to get two vehicles, uh, in and out, much less having garbage cans laying in the street.
Yeah, I agree.
Main was the same way.
I just have one thing on correspondence.
Say again?
I have one thing on correspondence, if we can be notified, like, when something's put in our mailbox, like, outside of like a, magazine, doesn't matter, but when we get addressed mail, I came in this last week or so for, uh, a meeting, and I had mail from the district inviting me to something that was happening that day. So if we, if we just, you know, whenever we put mail that's specifically addressed to us, just send, choose an email or something, hey, you got mail in your mailbox, I'd be more than happy to come down.
Yeah, I agree, that, that came to us the day it was. Because I had asked last year, when they have these events, that we be notified, and I don't know what happened, but we didn't get those till the day of.
I usually get it at home.
Yeah, I don't.
So I don't understand a lot of it.
I don't know what happened with it.
Yeah. Ah, okay, well, I think we're gonna, we, we're working with Penn Waste to resolve those issues, right? So those, those are the kind of things that we need to keep talking about. I mean, they have to be put back up on the sidewalk.
What's an update on the trash situation going on with Summit, and? I know there's still two guys on the truck, I thought it was supposed to be one.
Well, I know that they're having a very difficult time now, uh, just on Friday, they fill both trucks, um, before they re, which normally does not happen, uh, and they also had sixteen drivers call on one day.
What?
So they're dealing, yeah, they're dealing with, uh, a lot of issues like everybody else at this point. Um, I did have a conversation about making sure that the cans are placed back up on the sidewalk, I, 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 I hate to say it like this, but at this point, uh, you know, the garbage is getting picked up, the industry is still being, is still suffering from labor shortages. I realize they have a contract, and they need to adhere to that, um, but I think, my opinion, if, if the garbage is getting click, collected, and we're not having numerous issues with miscollections and, and other things, and cans being thrown out of the past, um, it needs to be a little bit of give and take in that part.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, it literally is a matter of just letting go of the can, letting it fall on the road, or putting it back up on the sidewalk. And if they're using the arm, the trouble is, is they're picking the can up and putting it on the arm, flipping it up, the can comes back, and then they just leave it in the, in the, in the road.
They need to push it back.
They need to, they need to push it back, place it up against it, or, or on the sidewalk.
I will have a conversation again with the, um, the Rob Supervisor, and I want to have another counsel as asked for that.
Yeah, please, cause that's just, I mean, and cause the first thing where I's gotta do is pick the can up, put it back on the sidewalk before you can even wheel it. And I can, you know, I don't have a sidewalk, so I don't have, you know, I can, I can wheel mine, so.
What's the resolution for Summit?
We have heard nothing from the H O A.
Ball's rarely in their court.
They have, we have had a couple of their residents switch out cans, but we have had no emails, no telephone calls, no updates from them about additional resolutions.
Two people moved, I don't know, but I don't think it was related to the trash, cause they already sold their house prior to.
That was before the contract was signed.
Right.
Now, it's funny, it seems with us, it seems like it's the regular big garbage cans, the recyclables generally are on the sidewalk.
We'll work on it.
I have one question, they did it out, but when are they planning on trying to start the automatic? You know, you, you.
I don't know, I'll find out.
I'm, I'm just curious, because I.
My assumption was that it would've already started at this point, but, like I said, I think they're having, they're.
They need a new truck for that, though, right?
Right.
Well, they have the truck, yeah, because basically, they said if they, if they had to order a truck at this point.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be, I think they already have the truck, but the trucks they're using are not the ones.
No, right.
Yes.
Well, they, they had one of their trucks that was doing garbage, that has the horn, that was down on Broad Street this past week.
Oh, so they do have one?
Yeah, so there was one running in town, but it was like, maybe the other one was one that was a back loader one, but they were running.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen the back loader, but I haven't seen the one with the horn, I keep driving around looking for it, cause I wanna see it work.
Truck, I haven't seen how the person.
See it work.
Did you entertain a motion?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Sorry.
Oh, paper?
It's one that I have a meeting.